We should be going live on Facebook. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting in the city council for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I, we're still under ordinance one thousand provisions. I have council members Mosley and Saunders present here on Zoom. And the remaining six council members present. And a small audience here in the crowd, thank you for coming tonight. The first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance. I've asked city attorney Krebs if she would lead us in that.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly father, we thank you so much for the privilege of being here tonight to conduct this city's business. We thank you for the safety of this body and that you have watched over us so well, Lord. We pray that you will give us wisdom to make good decisions and give us a spirit of civility and kindness to treat each other with the respect that you would want us to, Lord. We thank you for those who watch over our community and we pray for their safety as well. And we ask it in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on to special guests and announcements. The first item there is the employee of the month. For those that don't know, we didn't do these very much last year because we wanted to recognize the employee at a live meeting, so we've been doing some catch-ups. So this is the employee of the month for July of two thousand and twenty, and that would be Michael Cossey. Why don't you come on down? Go ahead and read this proclamation that I have here. Holy moly. This is a proclamation naming Michael Cossey as the mayor's employee of the month for July two thousand and twenty and declaring March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to be Michael Cossey Day in the city of Monell. Whereas Michael Cossey has served the city of Monell for over eighteen years in the fire department and is concurrently assigned as the division chief of training for the department. Whereas Chief Cossey has gone above and beyond his normal duties in the midst of the COVID nineteen pandemic, facing unprecedented challenges to public safety. Whereas Chief Cossey maintained constant contact with the Department of Medical Control Physician, the Arkansas Department of Health, and the Centers for Disease Control, assuring the city remained informed and updated regarding safeguards that kept personnel and citizens safe. And whereas Chief Cossey devoted extra hours to assure fire department personnel were given current and accurate information and demonstrated his ability to make sound judgments in the face of uncertainty while providing exemplary customer service to citizens and visitors of the city of Monell. Now therefore, I Caleb Morris, Mayor of Monell, do hereby declare Michael Cossey to be the mayor's employee of the month for July of two thousand and twenty and hereby proclaim March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to be Michael Cossey Day in the city of Monell. Be sure and smile and show teeth. Thank you very much for your service. You wanna give a speech to everyone, let me know? Again, I've often said that it is, when you're on the city councils, I was, or up here, we often think that we're making the big decisions and we're the ones facing the residents, but it's actually the employees that are the ones on the front lines doing all the hard work up there. All right, the next order of business is the state of the city report. And with the blessing of the city attorney and city clerk, I will take off my mask so that we don't need Chief Cossey to resurrect me if I pass out midway through this because it's quite wordy. That was a nice pause for suspense. Ladies and gentlemen of the Monell City Council, department heads, city employees, and my fellow citizens, Arkansas law requires that within the first ninety days of the year, I must report to you the municipal affairs of the city and recommend such measures as may seem advisable. This is that report. As you are aware, two thousand and twenty was an election year and four city council seats were up for election. The city has welcomed two new city council members, RJ Mazzoni and Doug Shin. Council members Mosley and Williams were re-elected for another four-year term. Two thousand and twenty, what is there to say about two thousand and twenty that hasn't already been said? When I last presented the state of the city report to the city council on March second, two thousand and twenty, I listed many goals and priorities for the year. Only nine days later, the first presumptive COVID nineteen case in Arkansas was announced. It has been said that everyone has a plan until they get punched in the mouth and COVID nineteen through a mean hook. I've been exceedingly encouraged by the resiliency of the city to face this adversary head-on, and that is what we did. Since the start of the health crisis, my philosophy for the city's role in responding to COVID nineteen was first, leave the health decisions to the healthcare providers, individuals, and the state. The state is better equipped and with more proper expertise to give healthcare directives than the city. Second, we needed to ensure that your city government was able to function properly during a worst-case scenario by protecting the city's critical workforce. In a worst-case scenario, the city still needed to provide essential services such as fire and medical support, police protection, and trash pickup. Finally, the city's response was aimed at city action and city property, not private action and private property. The city made a concerted effort to find ways to build and maintain our community during these unusual times. For example, the police department began holding birthday drive-bys for our youngest residents to celebrate their birthdays and other important events. The city revamped its Fourth of July parade to caravan around town and assisted Monell resident Derek Slater host a citywide Christmas caravan over the holidays. Another example includes the shift to a drive-through Halloween trunk-or-treat that the city and city staff held at various locations. The COVID health crisis highlighted the need for the city to modernize, digitize, and streamline its processes to better function in today's environment. One technology that we implemented last year was C Click Fix, a request and work management app and web tool that has strengthened communications between residents in the city by allowing residents to post non-emergency neighborhood issues such as potholes or streetlight outages. Since its implementation, four hundred and ninety-two requests have been created with four hundred and thirty-seven tickets resolved. I'd like to see that number increased, so I think I'm probably responsible for maybe a hundred of those requests. Please, if you're not familiar with that tool, let's get familiar with it so you can let us know the areas that we need to improve on. At the two thousand and fourteen general election, Monell voters approved bonds to finance the much-needed remodel and renovation of City Hall. In two thousand and twenty, construction was substantially completed. The redesign has effectively transformed City Hall's strip center-style layout to a more practical floor plan, providing for a more efficient workflow and additional security. As most of y'all know, larger council chambers has allowed for more seating than we previously had, and new technology has allowed for live streaming of city council meetings at this critical time. In two thousand and twenty, the mayor's office welcomed new staff and said goodbye to others. For example, longtime special projects manager Jack Stowe retired after serving the city for eighteen years under three different mayors. Due to budget constraints, a special project manager position is expected to remain vacant through the end of this year. The city also welcomed Sarah Smith to the chief of staff position. Sarah brings to the mayor's office her expertise in organizational development, collaborative engagement, and passion for Monell. Since joining the city in October, Sarah's developed and instituted new problem-solving practices to find new solutions, execute those solutions, and communicate them throughout our organization. I've also welcomed Joseph Hardy as the new communications coordinator. You should expect to see some really exciting new videos highlighting city services and initiatives here very soon. We continue to strive for better communication with residents, and that's a two-way road. Last year, over a hundred and fifty-one thousand people viewed our content on Facebook. Our peak engagement hit over fifty-one thousand for the virtual fire truck tour, which was a single video in a multi-part series designed to let children newly quarantined at home get a virtual tour of city vehicles such as the police car and trash truck. Speaking of police cars, Chief Cory Pickard completed his first full calendar year as chief of the Monell Police Department. On a daily basis, our officers are under tremendous pressure to enforce the law and to do so justly and safely for all concerned. As such, training and professional development are vital for law enforcement officers. In two thousand and twenty, the Monell Police Department logged six hundred and seventy-one course completions, three hundred and seventy, three hundred and seven certificates awarded, and four thousand seven hundred and twenty-four training hours logged. The police department saw a nine percent decrease in total calls for service and arrests were down thirty-three percent from last year and forty-seven percent from two thousand and eighteen, due largely to COVID nineteen. Traffic stops were down slightly from two thousand and nineteen, while citations were down thirty-three percent and traffic warnings were up eleven percent. Sadly, last year, there were sixteen narcotic overdoses in the city compared to ten in two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty, we saw a fourteen percent decrease in prime, fourteen percent decrease in crimes against person, a trend that we hope continues. Unfortunately, we also saw a thirty percent increase in property crimes. The primary cause for this increase was the very large number of unemployment fraud claims filed last year. We also saw a spike in motor vehicle thefts with thirty-four vehicles stolen in two thousand and twenty compared to twenty-two in two thousand and nineteen. Most of these thefts occur when the keys are left inside unsecured vehicles, so please remember to lock your car doors and do not leave keys or other valuables in your car. Despite this increase in the property crime, Monell's property crime rate of two hundred and eleven per one thousand is still below the state average of two hundred and eighty-six, and our violent crime rate of one point two seven per one thousand is significantly less than the state average of five point eight five, making Monell still one of the safest communities in the state. The police department's goals for two thousand and twenty-one include implementation of new defense tactics program for officers, accreditation through the Arkansas Chiefs of Police Association, and increased community outreach. On that note, I'm very proud of the way the Monell Police Department assisted local community members in setting up and conducting a demonstration in reaction to the death of George Floyd. This interaction and assistance was in stark contrast to those communities that saw the interaction between law enforcement officers and protesters as an us-versus-them situation. Likewise, I'm equally proud of the organizers, demonstrators, and Monell residents that were able to come together as a community to have their voices heard in a constructive manner. Relatedly, the police department used this opportunity to review and update its own policies and procedures on topics such as the use of force. The Monell Fire Department, led by Chief Gerald E. Zell, continues to be a leader in Arkansas with one of the top-trained departments in the state. They pride themselves in not only providing EMS and fire suppression services, but also top-notch fire code enforcement, fire prevention, and fire education to residents and businesses. For the year two thousand and twenty, one hundred and forty-seven business inspections were conducted within the city of Monell, resulting in the correction of forty-eight code violations. The fires marshal's office continues to do an excellent job, assuring that new businesses to the city of Monell are following the fire code and are some of the safest places in Arkansas for our citizens and visitors. The total number of fire department responses for the year was up eight point five percent to one thousand eight hundred and ninety-six. Medical emergencies and traumatic injuries and medical assists made up the largest percentage of emergency runs at seventy-one percent. Fire responses consisted of forty-eight called for a total dollar loss to buildings estimated to be three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Every Monell firefighter is also a licensed EMT, and six firefighters hold their paramedic's license, which allows us to provide advanced life support to the citizens of Monell quickly and often quicker than MEMs can arrive on scene. One goal the fire department had for two thousand and twenty that was extended into two thousand and twenty-one is to start an emergency rapid access initiative, which is a completely voluntary program where residents can obtain a key lockbox that fire and police personnel can use to gain access to a person's home during times of emergency by using an app. This program would allow our older or less-abled population to ensure that fire and police can gain entry to the home without having to damage the entry door. City clerk treasurer Tina Timmons and the deputy city clerk worked hard throughout the year to make sure that the clerk's office was able to provide support and services to city staff and residents during the pandemic, resulting in the same level of service. In addition, best practices were sought and implemented in order to have a plan in place during the unprecedented events like a global health pandemic or inclement weather. As part of that effort, the deputy city clerk received additional training in order to assist with daily operations at City Hall. Record retention and organization continues to be a primary focus in the clerk's office. Hundreds of records were added to the archives via electronic storage. Research efforts will continue in order to keep up with the most efficient ways to protect and maintain electronic files. The city clerk is on track to obtain her master municipal official designation. She also completed her third year as an advisor to cities of the first class with the Arkansas Municipal League. In two thousand and twenty, city attorney Melissa Krebs was and remains on-call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to provide assistance to law enforcement officers and other city personnel. The city attorney prosecuted all misdemeanors, traffic violations, and ordinance violations in Monell District Court. In two thousand and twenty, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four new charges were filed in Monell District Court. While bench trials were delayed for most of the year due to concerns regarding social distancing, city attorney Krebs continued to prepare and submit all discovery files and was able to resolve the majority of pending matters through negotiated agreements. She assisted with the preparation of search warrants and affidavits for numerous felony charges as well. As the only prosecuting attorney for Monell District Court, she also negotiated bond or argued on behalf of the state at bond hearings for both misdemeanor and felony charges initiated by the Monell Police Department. The city attorney litigated or oversaw litigation in civil matters involving the city. In two thousand and twenty, there was no new civil litigation case filed against the city. The case of Jennifer Corvo versus City of Monell, which concerns the method for payment of overtime compensation, remained in active litigation. One eminent domain proceeding was filed in Pulaski County Circuit Court, but that has now been resolved through negotiations and closed by court order. The city attorney provided regular legal advice to the council, the mayor, city employees, and commissioners during regular office hours in the context of regular meetings and on an on-call basis. She assisted in the preparation of the majority of sixty-three ordinances and resolutions considered last year. She also remained actively involved in the regular operations of the city, providing counsel on many code enforcement, planning, contractual, personnel, and policy matters, paying special attention to the changes in policies and procedures required by the Arkansas Department of Health's directives and guidance regarding COVID nineteen. The city attorney's purpose remains to defend and pursue the interests of the city and to assist in achieving its goals while first and foremost protecting the rights of the citizens. The Department of Senior Services, led by Nicole Vogler, continues to strengthen our fifty-plus community through services provided at the Monell Center on the Lake, promoting the health and well-being for this precious population. Senior Services partnered with Common Thread Church, Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, Counting on Each Other, Monell Charter School, local businesses, city departments, and other nonprofits to extend services and activities to Monell's older adults. As facilities close due to COVID nineteen, senior services staff at the Monell Center on the Lake serve the community by offering curbside service for lunch pickup, essential transportation, as well as virtual and in-person events. The partnership between volunteers and staff reflects the resilience, unity, and collaborative spirit that the city of Monell reliably demonstrates even in a difficult year like two thousand and twenty. Volunteers assisted staff to develop curbside pickup for nutritional lunches, giving older adults access to a nutritious hot meal. One senior resident said, quote, "I am so happy and I cannot be more appreciative to the center for continuing to prepare nutritional lunches. Since the pandemic began, I have not felt comfortable grocery shopping. The meals we purchase are the only food we eat and make it possible for us to stay in our home." Rides for medical appointments and shuttle service within the city of Monell continued throughout the year and averaged about sixty-five percent capacity from the prior year. Many of Monell's riders are completely dependent on the service to attend medical appointments in person and to be able to pick up groceries and prescriptions here in Monell. Led by director Mike Hogan, Public Works and its multiple divisions, including Animal Services, Building Fleet, Grounds Maintenance, Streets, and Sanitation, with their combined workforce of fifty employees, are poised for another industrious year. In two thousand and twenty, we saw covert rehabilitation and drainage repair projects around town as well as street overlay projects primarily on Arnold Palmer and in the Stone Ledge area, showing love to both the north and south sides of town. Thanks to the Arkansas State Aid City Street Grant of three hundred thousand dollars, we were able to overlay a portion of Odom North from Monell Boulevard to Woodland. The long-awaited Adaptive Traffic Signal Control System, which involved updating the traffic signals along Monell Boulevard, has finally been completed. We are seeing better synchronizing, synchronization between traffic signals, but there are still some tweaks and fine-tuning needed before we are completely done with this project. In two thousand and twelve, Monell voters approved the issuance of approximately three point two million dollars in bonds to widen and rebuild portions of Crystal Hill Road and a short portion of Counts Massey Road, both of which are in the city of Monell. In two thousand and nineteen, we decided to scale down that project from a four-lane road with a roundabout to a two-lane road with a median and turning lanes. This was designed to save taxpayer money, but it required a complete redesign of the road. As you may know, if you've been in that area, construction has commenced and progress is being made with the goal of having that road completely rebuilt this year. As I stated last year, we still need a thorough analysis of the annual funding necessary to maintain or improve the conditions of our city streets over the long run. To do this, we need a thorough audit of the condition of the city streets, the rate of their deterioration, and the estimated cost of improvement. Currently, the city is soliciting statements of qualifications from consultants to conduct a pavement inventory analysis and prepare a pavement management rehabilitation and preservation plan. Last year, the city conducted a study on a potential connection between Country Club Parkway and White Oak Crossing to address a growing traffic concern. One aspect of the study that I'm particularly proud of is the city's effort to solicit feedback from residents and businesses at the front end of this project. The city's online poll received one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven responses, and we found that fifty-four percent of respondents like or extremely like roundabouts and only twenty-five percent dislike or extremely dislike, with about twenty-one percent reporting that they neither like nor dislike roundabouts. The engineer's recommendation, recommended solution was a roundabout connecting Country Club Parkway to White Oak Crossing in Counts Massey. If you haven't heard, I'm proud to announce that the city received a grant of one point two seven five million dollars for this project, and I'm hopeful that construction can begin later this year. The Animal Services Division of Public Works saw four hundred and eighty-two animals enter the shelter and four hundred and sixty leave through owner reclamation, adoption, or by going to a rescue. In addition to canines, felines, canines and felines, numerous chickens and guinea pigs entered the animal shelter. Monell Animal Services live release rate for two thousand and twenty was ninety-eight point one percent. There was one case of rabies found in a bat in the city limits, but no human exposure was found. In two thousand and twenty, the shelter moved from handwritten reports to digital reports using SAM, ASM, pardon me, America Shelter Management. This software helps keep things organized on a daily basis at the shelter and provides for better data tracking, metrics, and analysis. As usual, the sanitation division has been busy over the last year. The new automated sanitation truck that we expected to receive in the middle of last year was significantly delayed, and we only just received it in the last couple of weeks. We have found that sanitize, that staffing difficulties in the sanitation division affects all of Public Works' operations and short-term personnel shortages in the sanitation division require reallocation of personnel from other divisions to the sanitation division, which in turn puts those other divisions behind. After all, trash pickup must go on. In two thousand and twenty, single-stream recycling amounted to five hundred and fifty-one point five tons. Transfer station staff bailed and sold one hundred and forty-six bales of cardboard, nine point four tons of mixed plastic, plastics, one point eight seven tons of steel cans, and nearly twenty-eight point five tons of mixed paper. In total, sanitation crew disposed of five thousand five hundred and thirty-one tons of solid curbside ways and seven hundred and ninety tons of transfer station solid ways. Curbside yardways totaled six thousand three hundred and seventy-five cubic yards and transfer station yardways totaled two thousand four hundred cubic yards. Public Works, including Animal Services, Building Fleet, and Grounds Maintenance, Streets, and Sanitation, continues to be one of the busiest departments in the city, providing vital, yet often unseated and unthanked, services. Liz Mathis was brought in as the new finance director in July of two thousand and twenty. Several other positions within the department have also been in transition over the last year, but the department is now fully staffed and working on improving the processes to eliminate reconciliation and audit challenges in the future. The finance department completed the two thousand and seventeen audit early in two thousand and twenty and is working on the final pieces of the two thousand and eighteen audit. Two thousand and twenty-one will be the year that we focus on catching up with plans to complete the two thousand and nineteen audit mid-year and the two thousand and twenty audit by the third quarter. As we move from catch-up mode to a normal operating mode, the focus will be on developing clear month-end closed processes that will improve the department's ability to provide accurate and timely financial data to the council, mayor, city staff, and the residents, and ultimately to have a timely audit and annual financial reports. The process and procedure development underway will be incorporated into our new software as we begin a full ERP software conversion to OpenGov Financials with a target go-live date of January two thousand and twenty-two. This platform will move the city's financial software to a cloud-based system and coordinate with the OpenGov reporting and budgeting software, which includes a transparency site, putting detailed financial data in the hands of the mayor, department staff, elected officials, and citizens. The finance department was proud to have supported the mayor and department heads in presenting a balanced general fund budget to the council this fall. This was the first step in developing a more strategic budget process to ensure the city is able to continue to provide quality services for the city, citizens of Monell, for years to come. The city's greatest assets are our employees, and the Department of Human Resources, now led by Doreen Mattis, has been hard at work. Facing increasing health, dental, and vision costs last year, the city engaged the service of a new insurance broker to help find the right fit for our employees. But before making any changes to the plan, we formed and ultimately adopted largely the recommendations of an advisory committee consisting of the department head and one employee from each of the city's four largest departments. Now, listen up. What I'm about to say is critically important to the city's future. We are quickly approaching a tipping point where city salaries are insufficient to retain and recruit the quality employees that we are looking for. In some instances, we are simply unable to fill vacant positions. This is probably one of the most important issues faced This is probably one of the most important issues facing the city, though it's not necessarily the most glamorous. Due to budget constraints for the 2021 budget, we were unable to implement necessary salary adjustments, despite the fact that all eligible employees receive merit or step salary increases. In solidarity with the employees, I personally declined to raise this year, as did council members Mosley, Mazoni, Gardner, Williams, Tierney, and Holt. During our budget process later this year, we must make every effort to increase employee salaries to remain competitive. In 2021, the HR department will onboard and implement a pair of NeoGov modules, Insight and Onboard. Insight serves as a recruiting module to help accelerate the time of hire by centralizing the process, attracting applicants, screening those applicants, and making informed hiring decisions while ensuring compliance with federal and state employment laws. The onboard module will accelerate the onboarding process by streamlining onboarding tasks, new hire documentation, and new employee training. Built to support the public sector's compliance requirements, onboard ensures day-one readiness for new employees. The Parks and Recreation Department, led by Philip Rayburn, strives to improve upon the services offered to citizens of Mammell while contributing to the overall sense of community in town. The COVID-19 health crisis had a major impact on Parks and Rec. The Jess Odom Community Center was closed on March 22nd, 2020 per state directives mandating the closure of gyms. With strict COVID-19 cleaning and social distancing procedures put into place, the community center, with guidance from the Arkansas Department of Health and CDC, was able to partially reopen on May 5th. In 2020, construction began on a new splash pad near Lake Valencia. Construction should be completed in time for our kids to enjoy this amenity over the summer. This project, with an estimated total cost of $180,000, is only costing taxpayers $75,000, with the rest of the funding coming through grants and donations from individuals and organizations within our community. In 2021, Parks and Rec plans to increase the number of programs offered at the Jess Odom Community Center in order to optimize the use of the facility and provide better services to the citizens of Mammell, as well as they intend to continue repairs, upgrades, and enhancements to all recreational facilities to increase use and enjoyment for the citizens of Mammell. Last year, the Department of Planning and Zoning, the city, and our community suffered the loss of Jim Nary, who had served as Planning and Zoning Director for seventeen years. In Jim's absence, Scott Gruber, my former Chief of Staff, served as the interim Director until eventually the Departments of Planning and Zoning and was merged with Code Enforcement's Building and Permits to create a single department called the Department of Planning and Permits, which is now directed by Scott Grummer. This restructuring has posed Mammell for strategic progress in planning by creating efficiencies, improved departmental communications, and has led to the creation of a new Planner Two position. In 2020, single-family residential housing starts were up nineteen point seven percent over 2019, with Ridgeview Trails, Osage Hills and Terrace, Mammell Valley Estates Phase 18, Country Club of Arkansas Phase 24A, and Carnahan Village as the most active subdivisions for new construction. Just as last year, there were eleven commercial remodel permits issued. There were two new commercial construction permits, one for Cypress Cold Storage for an $8.5 million addition to their facility, and one for Diamond Park Convenience Store at $1.3 million. In 2020, Code Enforcement issued 510 requests for compliance tags, eighteen citations to appear in Mammell District Court, and twenty-one stormwater notices of violation. Most of our requests for compliance were given out for violations regarding fences, vehicle and RV parking, lawn maintenance, yard wastes, and signs. Last year, planning addressed two land use amendments, three rezoning applications, four site plan reviews, including the new Amazon Distribution Center and the doubling of the operations at Cypress Cold Storage, five final plants, six replants, one master street amendment, and two conditional use permits. For 2021, a new enterprise-wide software system, OpenGov, will be implemented, which will replace the current iWork software being used by Planning and Permits, and will also add automated workflows for planning and zoning applicants that will not only streamline operations in the entire department, but will provide greater customer service through online application submissions and digital submission, as well as digital review of planned sets for buildings and subdivision projects. This online portal will allow builders and contractors to set up inspections online, reduce paper waste, and improve productivity for all involved. With the addition of the Planner Two position, the department will continue to grow its GIS solutions through interactive web maps for both staff and citizens. That means that field workers will be able to remotely identify key infrastructure in the city using this Esri technology, allowing the city to begin assessing and documenting city assets such as storm sewer locations, outfalls, green spaces, trails, and much more. One of the primary goals of Community and Economic Development Department, led by Judy Keller, is business retention and expansion. Now, the city kicked off these efforts in 2020 with a luncheon, which included a presentation to industry leaders by Randy Zuck, President and CEO of the Arkansas State Chamber and Associated Industries of Arkansas. However, shortly thereafter, the pandemic arrived and changed the way everyone did business. While quarterly meetings in person were no longer feasible, keeping businesses aware of funding opportunities and resources for personal protective supplies became an important part of business retention. Communication with these industries was never more important then during 2021 than during 2020 and continues to be here in 2021. Fortunately, many Mammell businesses benefited from federal and state grants that enabled them to meet the rigorous health mandates aimed at preventing the spread of the virus and to keep employees on their payroll. In spite of these challenges, Kimberly Clark Corporation in Mammell was successful in completing a 68,000-square-foot expansion, and Cypress Cold Storage began a 70,000-square-foot expansion. Special congratulations go out to Kimberly Clark for celebrating its 30-year anniversary here in Mammell. Since receiving site certification status through Entergy's Select Site Certification Program at the end of 2019, there's been significant activity concerning the 119-acre certified site. However, that work did not end simply with the certification. A new ruling became effective on June 22nd, 2020, concerning the waters of the U.S. On behalf of the owners, our wetland consultants submitted a request for termination to the U.S. Corps of Engineers concerning five streams and five adjacent wetlands on that 119 acre. Based on that ruling, the Corps determined that the five streams and wetlands are not under the jurisdiction of the Corps. So the owners also had an archaeological phase-two conducted on the site. Staff has worked closely with the property owners, Entergy's economic development team, and others throughout the year, including multiple prospective buyers. Another exciting endeavor in 2020 involved the city's Departments of Planning and Permits and Community and Economic Development in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce, Area Businesses, and Landowners in North Mammell, where they developed a visioning plan for that area along Interstate 40. The vision plan will help develop strategies for infrastructure needs and will help market that area to developers and other interests. In closing, 2020 was a year for the history books. Like most institutions, the city faced many unforeseen challenges that radically changed the way we function. I'm proud of the resiliency and courage that the city employees demonstrated as they navigated a global health pandemic while still serving the residents of Mammell. Special accolades are given to the police officers, firefighters, 911 dispatchers, and sanitation workers who are prepared to provide these essential services even in the worst of shutdowns. We must always remember to be governed not by fear but by reason, with the appropriate levels of caution based on the facts known to us. With this in mind, Mammell charges into 2021 with renewed optimism, tenacity, and a passion to serve and enhance our thriving community. Thank you for your time. God bless. Sorry for anyone who showed up and didn't know they'd get the chance to listen to that. All right. We will now move on to the approval of minutes of the March 1st regular meeting. Y'all received a copy of those minutes. Is there any discussion? I've got a motion second to adopt the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. The next order of business is public comment. I believe I have one public comment card that is not on an agenda item. The remaining public comment cards, and there's a stack of them, are on agenda items. We will address those when we get to that particular agenda item. The first one is Mr. Brett Winengar. If yours is on a topic, we can move it to that. The subject listed here is fairness.
It's on the Pipple ordinance.
On the Pipple ordinance?
Do I need to wait?
We'll go ahead and hold you for Pipple. Thank you. All right, that moves us to the financial statement review.
Good evening. That was a lot of info to follow up with more, lots of info. But here we go. I'll try to keep this fairly short and sweet. Taking a look at our general fund revenues, to start us up, we're looking at the February 2021 financials here. On our county millage tax, we're currently $218,000 behind budget year-to-date and $62,000 less than the prior year. While that sounds a little bit scary at first, just remember that that trend of budget is going to vary through the year because our largest receipts for our millage tax are in May and October. Variance to the prior year is related to the timing of the excess distribution. In 2020, that excess of $75,000 was received in February. In 2021, it's $76,000, and we received it just a few days ago in March. And so by the end of March, the year-over-year should look a lot more close than they do right now. On our franchise fees, our current year-to-date is $4,000 behind a year-to-date budget and $13,000 less than the prior year. The only thing I can see variance there is in February, the payment we received from Entergy for January was about $24,000 less than the previous year. I have a feeling by the time we catch up through February and our inclement weather, all of our utilities franchise fees might be a little higher because I know all of our utility bills are a little higher. State turnback funds, current year-to-date, $17,000 behind budget year-to-date, $24,000 less than the prior year. We've been talking about this for the last six months or so. There was a special payment in January we didn't get this year, and we know that the state is only distributing eighty-five percent of the municipal aid. And so we're still expecting, at this point in time, I haven't heard anything otherwise, that we should receive some of that back towards the end of the second quarter of this year, which is the fourth quarter for the state's fiscal year. And our county sales tax, current year-to-date, is $70,000 ahead of budget year-to-date and $22,000 more than the prior year. This amount is for taxes collected on sales in December. So that was our Christmas sales there. City sales tax, similar story, current year-to-date is $112,000 ahead on a budget year-to-date and $2,000 less than the prior year, and that's also sales tax from sales in December. Police Department, current year-to-date is $57,000 behind a budget year-to-date, $9,000 less than the prior year. In the Police Department and the Fire Department, both, one of the big chunks of revenue is the lot fee turnback. We don't receive that until July, so we're kind of going to see this trend until about mid-year. The timing of the quarterly 911 dispatch funds will also have a similar effect, so we haven't received those for the first quarter this year yet. Fire Department, year-to-date, $6,000 behind budget year-to-date, almost even with the prior year. Again, that'll catch up as we go through the year. Parks and Recreation, current year-to-date is $47,000 behind a year-to-date budget and $31,000 less than the prior year. We're going to continue to monitor those revenues and try to maintain expenses accordingly. Got a similar story in Senior Wellness. Current year-to-date is $7,000 behind budget and $31,000 less than the prior year. Like I said, we're going to kind of keep an eye on those and try to cut back expenses. I know with parks in particular, there's some seasonality. I think we're still seeing some hesitancy to purchase memberships from people until we get a little further into more comfortable being around lots of people. Our miscellaneous income, largest budgeted item there is a $646,000 transfer for the Capital Improvement Fund. We're not going to record that until the fire truck actually comes in, and so that's going to look down from a budget year-to-date until that time. Looking at our expenditures in all departments, other than Community and Economic Development, Planning and Permits, and Citywide Services remain under budget year-to-date. All of those three departments are related to the timing of purchases of annual memberships and renewals, so they're departments that are up a little bit at the first of the year, but we've spent what we're going to spend for the entire year in some of those categories. Overall, expenses are $246,000 under budget year-to-date and $75,000 less than the previous year. Larger increase in year-over-year in the Police Department is related to the timing of payments to the county jail. In 2020, that fee was paid quarterly. In 2021, we paid the entire annual fee in January. So that's going to create a little bit of a variance there. Increase from the prior year in the Fire Department is related to increase in overtime expenses. A lot of that may have been some of our winter storm weather in February. The general fund balance, as of the end of February, fund balance is $93,000 under the required minimum balance. This was related to the timing of those revenues and receipts and expenses. The mayor, the city clerk treasurer, and staff were all working now to monitor those cash flows before entering into some larger purchases. We're going to help try to ease some of these timing issues that we're experiencing right now that we're right at that minimum line. Looking ahead to our street fund, current year-to-date, $60,000 behind budget year-to-date and $16,000 behind the prior year. Similar to the general fund, we get our largest receipts on these millage taxes in May and November. State turnback funds, current year-to-date is $35,000 ahead of budget year-to-date and $18,000 ahead of the prior year. And the expenditures for both streets and the senior services transportation remain under budget year-to-date. Current street fund balance at the end of February is $4.3 million. And our sanitation fund, our sanitation fees, year-to-date is about $2,000 ahead of budget year-to-date and about $2,000 ahead of the prior year. And our operating expenses are $54,000 under budget and $4,000 less than the prior year. More specifically, the personnel expenses are $23,000 under budget and $11,000 more than the previous year. Looking at our Police and Fire Fund and our FEMA Grant Fund, that FEMA Grant Fund's not going to move until we see a little bit more movement on that project, but we have put all of the city's appropriations towards that. So all you're going to see on that fund movement now is expenditures and reimbursements from FEMA for that work. And in that Police and Fire Fund, current year receipts are $56,000 ahead of budget year-to-date and $1,000 less than the prior year. So that sums it up for the end of February.
Outstanding. Thank you. Are there... Councilmember Mazoni?
Yeah, I just want to go back to our city sales tax revenue. $3,000 year-to-date down from last year. Realize that was February last year included about $100,000 of the overpay that was offense taken out. So while that looks negative, that's pretty significant. They were holding on despite, you know, so it's actually $100,000 over what we really would have been year-to-date. That number will probably increase next month because that was the bigger chunk. That number will probably increase next month because that was the bigger chunk of that. But it still shows we're, to be holding even with that, that's pretty good. Hopefully that trend will continue.
We hope so.
There any additional questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financials. I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next order of business is a procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion to hear a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We will move on to unfinished business. We have the second reading of ordinance 1022, amending chapter 10 of the Monmel City Code. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted ordinance of the city council, the city of Monmel, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1022, and ordinance amending chapter 10 of the Monmel City Code to revise enforcement procedures, eliminate the category of potentially dangerous animal and hazardous animal to change the current definition of dangerous animal, to remove the ban on certain breeds of dogs and for other purposes.
All right, this on second reading. Is there any discussion?
I've got something.
We've got public comment cards. Hang on, I must skip. Skip that. Is this the same? Let's start with the reading of the emails, if you don't mind. And for those interested here and at home, ordinance 1,000 provides that the first 10 emails that we receive on a topic may be read into the record. There's a few conditions on that. You have to contact the, get that to the city clerk requested to be read. And then there's a word limit on there as well, 300 words, just for anyone that is asking. Madam City Clerk?
The first public comment I'm going to read is from Phil Sowers, 143 Pleasantwood Drive here in Monmel. Dear honorable members of the Monmel City Council, all it takes is a quick Google search to discover that pit bulls and pit mixed breeds are number one killer of humans in the United States among dog breeds. As a dog owner and dog lover, I implore you to keep in place the current ordinance banning pit bulls and similar breeds that statistically have a much higher propensity to attack adult humans, children, and other innocent animals. There is a reason they have a reputation that they have. Respectfully submitted. Ms. Robinson is in the audience. Would you still like me to read it or would you like to read it yourself? Would you like to read it or would you like me to read it? I am reading this on behalf of Patty Robinson, 120 Ridgeland Drive here in Monmel. To the mayor and the Monmel City Council members, as a Monmel resident and dog lover, I am very concerned over the council considering repeal of the pit bull, bull breed ban in Monmel. I moved to Monmel for the safe and friendly atmosphere. I am certainly many more have too. I am certain many more have too. Removing the pit bull and bull breed bans would certainly take that sense of safety and well-being away. Although you may believe the decision to repeal may be fair and just, only one incident involving an elder, a child, or a pet with a legal bull breed dog has the ability to be life-changing, not only in the form of human and animal suffering, but also impacting your constituents' financial costs due to higher unhomeowners insurance, renters insurance, and lower property values. Please do not succumb to the pressures of big money, pro-bull, pro-bull breed organizations or nonprofit organizations, and vote to keep our community safe by keeping pit bull and bull breed dogs illegal in Monmel. If you do not have the courage or conviction to take a stand for the safety of our community, then please allow the referendum to come to the people for a vote. And Mr. Mayor, if it comes down to a tie, I pray that you have the fortitude and integrity to send this important matter to the voters for a final decision. To do otherwise would be simply wrong, and events could occur that would play your memory forever. All it takes is one injured or dead child and it will be on your hands for the rest of your life. Thank you for your consideration. One more.
Tough, isn't it? I felt like I needed to drink a whole gallon.
The final public comment I'm going to read is on behalf of Ms. Amy Theobod, 11 High Timber Drive. My name is Amy Theobod and I live at 11 High Timber Drive here in Monmel. For transparency purposes, I would like to let the council members know I volunteer with the Monmel Friends of the Animals, serving on the board of directors as the dog foster coordinator. Unfortunately, I'm at home recovering from surgery and cannot be with you in person today. In my volunteerism, I interact with and care for dogs of many breeds, sizes, and temperaments. I've only been nipped once by a very tiny, very scared dog, and it was 100% my fault. Those last words are perhaps the most important. It was not the little creature's actions that were amiss. It was mine for not reading the signs he was giving me. I corrected my behavior and he and I were able to forge a bond after that. The best dog I ever owned was a pit lab mix that was able to go with my ex-husband to work without any incidents to any number of places as he rehabbed our rental properties. Why? Because he was a magic pit bull? No. Because we formed a bond with him so strong that he heeded our every command without fail. The same was true for every dog we owned together after we had to let Chopper go when he got very sick. People are at the heart of the relationship they have with every dog and their care. Irresponsible owners are the problem, not the dogs, not the breed of dog. This ordinance give Monmel Animal Services officers the right tools in their toolbox to effectively mitigate problematic owners regardless of the breed of dogs they own. Finally, when I vote for representatives, it is my expectation that they lead with clarity of heart and with intelligent thought. I'm going to stop there. The email continues, but it exceeded the 300.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, I have 12 public comment cards. I'm going to call them in the order that we received them. Please keep it to three minutes. If everyone does that, it'll only last over 30 minutes. Please. So, so please try not to repeat too much, though this is your opportunity to address your local government. So first up will be Brett Winagar. Did I pronounce that right, sir? Close enough, okay. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Brett Winiger, 6812 Rustwood. Been asked to speak here today. I'm not a citizen of Monmel. I live in, in Celine County, but I'm heavily involved. I want to thank you all for the honor to address you here tonight. Like many of you in this room, I've been a dog person for my entire life, but also been conditioned to fear any canine that even resembled a pit bull. Then I discovered my dog, Charlie Bravo. She'd been stuffed inside a plastic crate, abandoned and left to starve on the side of a deserted highway right here in Arkansas. She was so close to death when my son and I found her that she bore no resemblance to any pity I'd ever seen. Due to her advanced state of starvation, her thin face, slender build, and tanned feet left us with the impression she was some sort of hound mix. Then my wife's concoction of puppy chow, condensed milk, and raw eggs began to take effect, and she began to fill out into the beauty she is today. And we're talking about Charlie here, not my wife. When it became apparent that I'd accepted a pit bull into my house, I was not pleased. I must admit I had swallowed the tainted Kool-Aid that society loves to force down our throats. If I were to believe them, I had not rescued a dog. I'd instead adopted a snarling time bomb, a dog whose sole purpose was to attack and destroy. If I had happened to live in the city at that time, they had breed specific legislation in place when I rescued this emaciated dog, I would quickly find myself on the wrong side of the law only after it became evident who she really is. But because I do not, Charlie had the chance to fulfill her destiny. She is an official Arkansas ambassador of motorcycling. Her social media has tens of thousands of followers from around the globe. But her story is not just about animal rescues, more importantly, people rescued. She now rides on the back of my motorcycle crossing the country to spread her message of acceptance for all, and even has had the honor of participating in the Christmas parade in the city right here in Monmel. And if I had known that she was a pit lab mix when I found her, should I have left her to starve on the side of the road? Not on your life. I believe that all dogs and their owners are innocent until proven guilty and have the right to be judged on their actions and not their predigrees. Besides, for better or worse, a pit lab mix describes the vast majority of unwanted dogs in Arkansas as it is. Breed-specific legislation makes it even more difficult to adopt instead of destroying these maligned animals. My question to you, how can the powers that be discriminate against that which they cannot even properly describe? I found that any decision based solely on fear is always the wrong decision. Sometimes those who actually would label monsters based on appearance alone are actually angels placed in our paths to allow us the opportunity to respond instead of reacting. I ask you on their behalf to respond in their favor tonight. Again, I thank you much for your consideration, and my sincere wish is that you may each find your own personal charter.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Lane Briening. Three minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
It's a little over three minutes, like 30 seconds over, so please. Good evening. My name is Lanelyse Briening and I live at Forest St. Thomas Court. Some of you may know me from my time with the city and some of you may not. I've served several positions within the city such as the deputy city clerk and the council payable coordinator. But the most important position that I held was an animal control officer. This was my dream job. Well, not exactly my dream job, but it was an opportunity to work with animals, and that in itself was my dream. Regrettably, I was only there for a short while, but the people I met, the things I learned, and the community I served was eye-opening, to say the least. I was unable to make a statement to the council last year because of my official capacity with the city, but today I speak merely as a citizen. I'm not going to stand here and regurgitate articles I've read or give you statistics that don't really matter, but I am going to stand here and tell you what I do know. I've personally been bitten a total of three times, twice as an animal control officer and once before. Not one of those breeds was a bully breed or a pit bull. They were from mixed breeds such as the ever-popular lab mix and a chihuahua. As a citizen of this community, I look towards its leaders to make just and educated decisions based on the facts and the needs of our community. I feel that some of the council's lost sight of the true issue and that it has become more complicated than it should be. Since the dawn of man, it has been known that dogs have teeth and they may or may not bite. When you bring an animal into your home, you're taking that risk. This is why it is solely the responsibility of the pet owner to educate and discipline. Why should it be the dog's fault? Dogs are not humans and they communicate entirely on a different level. The city of Monmel has an excellent animal control department that is at your disposal Monday through Saturday with an on-call officer 24/7. I think the council is overlooking a crucial opportunity in helping themselves make an informed decision on anything animal-related. Chris Davis, supervisor of the animal, the Monmel Animal Service, has over 10 years of certified experience in the field of animal welfare. Along with his staff and the tireless members of the Monmel Friends of the Animals, they are some of the most dedicated, compassionate, and hard-working individuals that you will ever come across in your line of business. You can read every article that has ever been written about fan breeds, but you can never truly grasp the knowledge without experiencing it firsthand. With that being said, I ask that each and every city council member, along with the mayor, city clerk, and city attorney, spend a day at the shelter. If you can't spend a day at the shelter, spend a few hours. Meet the staff, meet the animals, ride along with an officer, and observe their day-to-day involvement with the community. Take part in city events and get involved. Ask questions that you want answers to instead of getting your information from outside sources. As political figures, get your hands dirty and stop hiding behind newspaper articles and social media. I read an article the other day in which a council member stated, there's no mandate to pass this ordinance. It's just somebody that wants to get it done, and this ordinance accomplishes nothing for the growth of the city. I was absolutely appalled. As a member of the city council, it is your job to, it is your job to be the voice of the community and listen to your constituents. This is not a platform for your own individual whims and wants. City growth does not just stop at the economic level. City growth encompasses all aspects of the city, including animal welfare and impact. So you see, this is.
That button came, thank you, Ms. Briening. I'm not being mean. I just want to keep it fair for everyone that's coming up here. Miss, Mr. Gary Childers? Come on down. You're the next contestant. Three minutes, sir, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Gary Childers. I live at 11 Hickory Lane, and I have since 1993. I've had four years in insurance as an adjuster, multiple lines, bodily injury. Last 22 years as an investigator for the state of Arkansas in the Work Commission, and the last 10 years in the insurance department. Retired from the insurance department and enjoying it out here. I have been designated as an expert witness by the insurance fraud unit. And I'm just going to give you some underwriting facts. Let me be quick about this. Rates based on fire department training and equipment. Rates are based on police training, equipment, other risk factors such as claims history, upkeep of premises, attractive nuisances such as swimming pools, playgrounds. Even credit scores are taken into account when your, your insurance is rated. Also, city ordinances such as bans on certain animals, wild animals, endangered species, certain breeds of dogs. I thought it would have an impact on my insurance. It will have an impact on people's insurance if it's covered. Might no longer. What losses are not covered, exclusions. Body injury or damage arises of the ownership and custody of, care of, the following pure or mixed breeds. Any pit bull type, which may be known as American pit bull terrier, American straffordshire terrier, straffordshire bull terrier, something I've never heard of, bull terrier, miniature bull terrier, American bulldog, doggo, argenti, argento, La Papa Blue blood bulldog, or Alpha Blue bulldog. And I said, well, golly, if I get mauled by one of these, whoever owns one probably doesn't have coverage on it. Nate, I said, your insurance is going to fall. That's okay. I know that is a fact. So if you don't want insurance between you and your dog, and your dog mauled somebody, and you get a million-dollar judgment against you, hey, knock yourself out. So it makes no sense to me. Like I said, I'm doing a fact check, and I thought I was covered. And I don't have a pit bull, but that's telling me that Nathan, people that have a policy, insurance policy, their dog is not going to be covered. It's not going to be on them. They're going to have to foot the bill, or they're just going to flee and leave you holding the bag. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up is Michelle Elliott. Two minutes, okay, I'm timing you literally. Please state your name and address for the record.
It's Michelle Elliott. Can I take this off?
You may.
Okay. One, I'm double vaccinated, so we're good. Don't start my time yet. Wendell Cove. You ready?
Yes.
And my name is Michelle Elliott, and I'm a 30-year resident of Monmel as of this July. First of all, all the breeds he just listed are not in our ordinance. So just so you know, it's already not covering on those breeds. But anyway, back to my speech. I've chosen to make Monmel my home for my entire life. I'm speaking tonight as someone who's not only read ordinance 1022 in its entirety, but I've taken the time to discuss it with our animal control officers. I would hope that all of you on the council would have done the same before you have formed your opinions and passed judgment on this ordinance and how we will help our ACOs to better perform their job duties. I'm not an expert in animal control, and I don't believe anyone on our council is an expert in this area either. I do, however, trust the experience of our animal control officers as well as their professional judgment. Ordinance 1022 gives them more ability to address in a timely fashion with vicious and mistreated animals in our community. Vicious is not breed defined, nor should it be. We've seen just this week, some of our most shrill advocates for the current breed ban expressed grave concern over a post about a dog in our community, a dog that's a pure breed of dog, but it's not a banned dog. But they assumed it was due to its appearance. I've come to you in favor of ordinance 22, 1022, and then you will trust the people you've chosen to put in charge of your animal control. These people are recognized by their peers as experts in their field, in their judgment that the provision of Ten Twenty-two is solid and needed. I come to you also with a long history that I have here in Mammell to say we've had a number of issues through the years that people have felt passionate about. I myself have attended council meetings that have had to be moved to the community center and to a local church in the past due to the vast amount of people who were interested in the issue at hand. In every single instance that I recall, the council did the job that they were elected to do and voted the issue up or down. Some of you on this table were there, if you recall, Mayor. I believe you're at one of those very large contentious issues. Now, we have some of these same shrill voices that I mentioned earlier, who when they fear things won't go their way, they're using whatever tactics they can to keep you from doing your job. One of these individuals even suggested you send the chicken issue and the fireworks ban to vote as well. I would say this, the people have spoken in their choice as you for their representatives, as the people to make the hard decisions. Unless you think the issues raised in this ordinance were not at the forefront of those voters' minds in the last election just a few months ago, where four of you were chosen, I'll remind you that one of the councilmen took time from a council meeting to make a point to remind the voters to take this very issue that wasn't even on the agenda at that time, make sure you take it into consideration when you vote. So I will say the public has spoken. Prior councils, as the elected governing body for our city, have had the intestinal fortitude to vote on highly contentious issues. Don't be bullied into not providing the leadership that your job, the one you're paid to do by us, requires. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Little over two minutes and forty-five seconds, but we'll let it slide. Next up, Patty Robinson. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patty Robinson, I live at one-twenty Ridgeland Drive in Mammell, I've been there twenty-two years. Proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm citing a study, and I love numbers and percentages, regarding one thousand six hundred sixteen consecutive dog bites in children's hospitals. This is a medical study, this is not propaganda. Of the dog bite injuries, pit bulls were implicated in half of the surgeries performed. Two and a half times more likely to bite in multiple anatomical locations compared to other breeds. Forty-seven percent of those injuries by children was inflicted by the family dog. Forty percent of them were inflicted by a dog the child knew. Of the forty-six breeds that were identified, thirty-eight were identified as pit bulls. Thirteen percent were mixed breeds, with the majority of those mixed breeds mixed with pit bulls. The lady just spoke about the comment, the Mammell City Code as it stands, I know you ladies and gentlemen know this, but it was banning specific, or it is, but banning specific breeds, American Pit Terrier, Staffordshire Bull Terrier, American Staffordshire Terrier, American Bulldog, any dog whose sire or dam is a dog of a breed which is defined as a banned breed of dog under this section, any dog whose owners registers, defines, admits, or otherwise identifies the dog as being a banned breed, even if they call it a Yorkie Terrier mix. In eight studies, pit bulls are the most prevalent breed in dog bites and inflicted the most severe injuries. To compare it to a Chihuahua bite is ridiculous. One only has to look at firsthand knowledge. And I have seen the damage that a pit bull can do, and it ain't no Chihuahua bite. I call your attention to another article that I sent you all regarding a nine-year-old boy, Robbie Taylor. Not in the grave one year yet. He was attacked by two pit bulls going to his mailbox. This child was ripped to shreds. His sister found him, and his mother went to him, and he was dead, drug away by two pit bulldogs. It only takes once. As for the repeal BSL.org push email campaign, as you all know, there have been many fraudulent emails associated with that. The one that was used for me was a pattyrobinson@yahoo.com, and that is a good email address. Unfortunately, it's not mine, it's another lady's named Patty Robinson who lives in California. Why would any leader of our community resort to this? All I can say is, we want the right to vote. We don't want this shoved down our throats. I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
All right, next up is Darren Patrick?
Daryl Patrick. I've got terrible handwriting, I apologize.
I can't read either, so we need to...
It's quite all right, is it okay if I pull this down?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Can I pull this down?
Yes, sir.
I'm Daryl Patrick at Eight Mountain Ridge Cove. So I had a chance to talk with my elected Ward Two Representative Chad, Councilman Gardner, is that acceptable? Chad, and about a week and a half, two weeks ago, we had a civil discourse, and I appreciate your time, I do. But there are some things that we discussed that I don't agree with, and I want to say why. Number one, the very first thing he said is, he did not, the reason why he wanted to go at the council level and not as a vote to the people, is that it's not contentious. I think that's settled. Number two, Mammell elected our councilmen to make tough decisions for us, that's true, I understand that. But at the same time, there is a handful of decisions, and there's a slippery slope here, no one wants to come to a council meeting, and it's not a councilman, I don't think. But there's a handful of decisions that I think everybody's voice should be heard. This is one of those decisions. They're painting it as if you vote against Ten Twenty-two, that you're voting against, you know, pit bulls. No, what you're doing is allowing your constituents, the people that elected you to office, to make that decision on whether we want pit bulls in our neighborhood, and if that's what the people want by a majority, then we'd go with that. And by my well-funded opposition people here, it looks like that might be how the vote goes next November. Because there's a lot fewer of us than there are of them here, but I want to vote on it. I don't want you to vote on it, I want us to vote on it, and the only way to do that is to vote this down, okay? Number three, they're going to trash every statistic you come up with, no matter what it is. It doesn't matter. And you say, "Well, I think that sixty-five point five percent of fatal dog bites come from pit bulls." They will not tell you what their number is. My own representative, Mr. Chad Gardner, said he's been researching this issue for two years. I said, "Well, Chad, what's your number?" Then let me know. There is no number coming from the other side, because that number does not paint a good picture for that other side. Now, whether that's sixty-five percent, or eighty percent, or fifty-five percent, it's a substantial number because pit bulls were bad bred to kill. That's what they do. Now, you might be able to domesticate them, no problem, I understand that, right? Well, that brings up number three, there are no bad dogs, just bad owners. Well, roughly fifty percent of all dogs out there that are up for adoption right now are pit bulls. Now, I don't think that Mammell Animal Services or anyone else took a good dog away from their owner and put it, you know, you know, took it away from a good owner. So now you've got these dogs out there that potentially had bad owners going and getting re-adopted. Can they be rehabbed, can they not? I don't know, I really, I, that's one thing that you won't hear anyone here say, "I don't know," but I don't know that. But I'd still like the opportunity to vote for it come November. And the last thing, the current law can't be enforced. Well, I don't know if the current law can be enforced or not, but, I mean, there's an exchange on Mammell All About Community from November eighth, twenty eighteen, where Mr. Chad Gardner, Mr. April Thomas Mosley, and Chris Davis all were discussing with prospective residents how to circumvent the current law. Let's give it a chance.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I have Jessica from Boulevard Vet. If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jessica Roberts, I live at forty-five Masters Place Drive. Before I start, I just want to say I'm not representing the Boulevard Vet, I'm representing myself. I don't own the clinic, so this is my personal opinion. I am a veterinarian serving the central Arkansas area and a resident of the community. Two years ago, I spoke to the council about our breed-specific legislation with regard to my professional opinion and provided factual information about the many organizations voicing a strong anti-BSL position. American Veterinary Medical Association was one of them. This was not enough to guide the vote in the direction of progress. I'd like to take a different approach tonight. Before explaining my personal view on breed-specific legislations, I do want to address the parents and family members of those who have experienced trauma from incidents with dogs of the pit bull-type breed. I am a mother myself of three children, I cannot imagine the pain and emotion associated with a situation like this. During my first council meeting on this issue, I even had to speak after a client of mine, which I am doing today. I had to speak after a client of mine expressed his opposing opinion on lifting Mammell's BSL in relation to experience with a child of his. This was exceptionally difficult. As I love my clients, I consider them like family. My opposing view is not because I lack empathy or that I do not care. My view comes from the knowledge and the experience that all dogs are animals, and every one of them can cause harm. My experience comes from working with these animals every single day for thirteen years. As loved ones, we want to make sense of painful experiences and find blame. This is natural. I'm sure I would have those feelings if in their position. I'm very protective of my children around my own dogs, even though I trust them and have loved them their whole lives. This can happen to anyone with any dog, and singling out an animal based on their breed does not prevent the risk. In order to remove the danger of bites, we would have to ban old dogs, just as we would have to completely remove interaction with all other human beings to prevent harm from people outside of our family. This is no way to live life and doesn't solve anything. We must get to the root of the problem and try not to live with misguided fear. As to my own views on these laws, I have always equated breed-specific legislations to profiling and prejudice. A certain dog exhibits a bad behavior and/or has the capability of causing harm, so we ban all dogs like him. A teenage white male robs the gas station, do we ban all teenage white males from gas stations? This is a slippery slope from which we should have learned better over the last fifty years. But here we are still fighting for basic human rights. Every human being has the capability of doing terrible things. Legislations regarding specific ethnicities, gender, sexual orientations, et cetera, are not the answer. Just as banning specific breeds is not the answer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up is Leslie Rush.
Start my time, you know how this will go.
If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Of course. I am Leslie Rush, and my address is off of Mammell Valley Estates on Sierra Valley Loop, and I'm here to talk to you about reputable facts over fear. As stated by the Humane Society of the United States, breed-based policies are based on miss and misinformation rather than science-incredible data. However, the impact on dogs, families, and animal shelters is heartbreakingly real. I've provided you with a handout that lists twenty-one national organizations within the U.S. that oppose BSL, including top professional organizations for lawyers, vets, animal control officers, animal researchers, animal behaviorists, and trainers, preventers of animal cruelty, and rescue organizations such as myself. These are just a small sample of professionals in canine-related fields that agree that breed-based bans are ineffective and a waste of public resources. Best Friends Animal Society ran a fiscal report specifically for our town and estimated that proper breed-specific enforcement, we would waste time and approximately twenty-four thousand dollars in enforcement, which I'm happy to share if anybody wants to email me. Both sides have figured out my email well. Wasting tax dollars to persecute citizens based on their dog's appearance is a government failure. A far more efficient use of public resources would be to enforce laws for all dogs and to prosecute, penalize, neglect, or reckless owners, not dogs. It is time to replace our current archaic ordinance with an ordinance of Ten Twenty-two that supports breed-neutral regulations of all dogs. And just for the record, I ask the opposition to stop their personal and professional attacks on myself and other Ordinance Ten Twenty-two supporters blocking posted reputable sources of information and straying from the topic we are currently focused on. And I'm not sure where that money is everybody keeps talking about, but I would love to have some, because an animal rescue of over twenty years, it takes my entire salary that I've ever had. My husband's salary is the way it keeps us going, and my salary for my entire life since college has gone to animal rescue, as an independent rescuer, later with Out of the Woods Animal Rescue, and then with several organizations currently. So I would love to know where that money is, but it's probably just coming out of my pocket, and that's, we're not funding anything. So we're happy to stand here as citizens of Mammell as a resident for over eighteen years, and I appreciate you guys. Hope you support Ordinance Ten Twenty-two.
Thank you. Next up is Trisha Grant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Trisha Grant, nineteen Nimrod Cove. This is going to be disjointed because I've got thrown off by some of the comments here. All right. Revised Ten Twenty-two, the primary concern is the welfare of our citizens that reside here in Mammell. It is the concern for the improved welfare of the dogs and animals that reside in Mammell. If you guys don't know, this is the email I sent you. They're getting to hear it, and they're getting to hear it. I approve, if you don't know, I approve of this new revised Ten Twenty-two. You, the city council, is charged with examining the professional, educated, vetted material that is given to you. I heard the mayor said tonight that you were looking at professional, qualified materials that you were looking at this year. That's what you do. And you looked for issues that are presented, when you're looking at issues presented in Mammell. The aldermen are elected to serve as our informed government to guide our city. There are going to be many in this community that will read the revised Ten Twenty-two. There will be many that do not, and react in an evocative manner. Our aldermen, by their non-bite research, will know better. If this is brought to a vote, the optics on Mammell will increase as the ugly misinformation campaigns roll across the wards. Hateful comments, neighbor against neighbor, line up, and the media will cover each excruciating step across the way. Y'all have hung all been whom what happened in the last couple of days. The posting, both members are in here, the man who posted the picture of his lost dog, and the woman and several other members who jumped on it. This is the poster child of what this is upon. It's not just dogs being lost, it's jumping on an animal, and the lack of empathy. And this is the welfare of our community, our neighbors. This is what it's becoming, not rational, not a community, not a city. It's breaking down. This is what it's becoming. I'm done.
Thank you.
Oh, I made it.
All right, Vitun Vigorath? Did I butcher it pretty bad?
Nah, you're all right.
Okay. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Vitun Augustine Vigorath, I live on Five Apple Blossom Cove on Diamond Point. And I'm a resident of Mammell for, we're going on four years now, right? So the last couple of days, I had no idea any of this was going on, so this ordinance, this is new to me, okay? But I'm a owner of a purebred Old English Bulldog that got loose Saturday night, okay? Me and my daughter were frankly looking for this dog, so I, you know, three hours. So I posted this post on Neighborhood, hoping that the neighborhood in Mammell, Arkansas would actually help me find my dog. Instead, I find out the very next day it's used as a poster child. Now, how upsetting is that to be for my neighbors to do something like that, okay? Okay? This dog is the most gentle dog anybody would ever meet. He's a purebred, yes, and he's registered. I have adopted, you know, pit bulls in the past. I had two that had passed away. They lived to be twelve and thirteen years old, all raised by my child, my kids. Not once had one of those children never been attacked by one. You know, and it's really absurd to me that, you know, when you reach out to a community and this is what they do. That's appalling. I'm sorry, you know, being a new, new community, you know, new member to the community of Mammell, that's hurtful. Now not only that, the whole community assumed my dog to be a pit bull. So what if my child was to walk that dog down the street? What grown man or woman would not to cause that child in the middle of the street? Minding their own business. Now what kind of dangers does that press, you know, what that president set for a community? I am upset, yes. You know, this, this right here? This is appalling. You're, you're going to judge a dog by the breed? No, you judge a dog by the character. You don't judge a dog by the looks. Because a bull mastiff, they got big bulky heads too. They go a size of two, three hundred pounds. They can be just as vicious as any other dogs out there. But why watch specific breed? It's because society chooses specific breed. You know, it's time to get past that. The one that's been here for what, thirty years? Okay? Now, look what Little Rock's done. You know, or look at other cities, what they're doing. Let the owners be responsible for the action of their dogs, not the dogs. Because, you know, just like back in, you know, back in the time, dogs were wild breeding. We domesticated them to make them pets. Dogs were born to do one thing, that's to serve the alpha and to serve an omega. Those two factors are what decide how a dog behaves. Thank you.
Jeff Van Penn, come on down. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor. I'm Jeff Van Penn, in thirty-one minute drive. Thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. It's, it's really great to be here in front of you tonight. I, I hope to speak to you in a soft, non-shrill voice. Uh, that's always my goal, is to be, to be a soft and hopefully a voice of reason. Uh, members of the city council, I believe we have a golden opportunity. Uh, it was presented before, I hope it's presented again. And that is that to take this, uh, this business about the, the dogs and, uh, the breeds of dogs, take this to the voters and let them decide. I think the city council, this wonderful body, has spent way too much time on this and the city has some great needs out there. Uh, I hope that tonight, the city council gets another opportunity to vote on taking this to the voters. And if they get that opportunity, I hope they vote, uh, to do that. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. I should screenshot that time, that was a record time. Uh, my final comment card on this is Stephen Davenport.
This is Stephen Davenport at Five Oak Forest Cove. Um, so I'd like to start out, I grew up in a pretty impoverished neighborhood. Uh, just about everybody had a dog, whether it's for security reasons or for companionship. But regardless of that reason, many of these pets were abused, neglected, and left to, to their own devices. Add to that, most of the fences were chain-linked, anywhere from forty-eight to fifty-four inches tall. And they were always, or most of them, in disrepair. And the city typically failed to hold any standard or ordinance, by the way, the city of North Little Rock, any ordinance requiring maintenance. Um, add to the fact that animal control was, you know, far and few between. Uh, it's a fairly large city. Uh, growing up there, I've been bitten by a lab and a border collie. I've been chased by a German shepherd and several mixed breeds. I mean, they're everywhere. One thing I will note, that this is, um, an ordinance with the Mammell. And one of the biggest things is, um, we're supposed to hold to those standards. Another thing is, uh, most fences required by the city, is required by the city to be maintained and are typically six feet tall. And as the mayor did mention. And, uh, you know, this is a more pet-friendly community. I mean, we have dog parks. I've seen more people with, uh, their dogs out on the walk and, uh, you know, at the dog parks, Willistine, everywhere, um, than growing up. I've lived here for thirteen years. So I think that makes a big difference. I know there's a lot of statistics, you know, pointing both ways, but I think the biggest thing is that the city does maintain ordinances to, you know, help curb loose dogs, um, which are typically the issue when it comes to pit bull attacks. I mean, yeah, I understand that people do raise pit bulls to fight, but they were originally bred as hunting dogs, working dogs. People just, you know, they found out that they can make money off of it and exploit them. Well, I mean, typically that's not the case. We don't have that issue here. Otherwise, there would be other dogs in, in different breeds, uh, you know, in dog fights. But I'd like to point out, the biggest thing is Mammell's, uh, city ordinances and animal control. I think we do a really good job with it and I think the, the breed ban is just a little ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes, uh, public comment. Is there any discussion from the council at this time?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Mosley.
Yes, sir. Uh, last council meeting, we talked about a referendum and had some constructive discussion. And I've since, uh, uh, had conversations with Lanny Richmond, who's with municipal league and with our own city attorney. And I'm going to make a motion here tonight to go ahead and take this to a referendum. And I'll make the motion and I'll explain what will happen. Uh, I make a motion to take this proposed ordinance to a referendum by the people in the primary election currently scheduled for May twenty-twenty-two and request that the city attorney guide us through the process to accomplish this. Uh, what this would do if passed is it would take the current version of the ordinance and it would put it on the ballot at that primary election and, and the people of Mammell would vote on it. If it's passed, then the ordinance would pass. If it fails, then the ordinance fails. Uh, that's how I understand it. If the city attorney has a different take on it, please let me know. But I, I, I am making that motion, thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
Yeah, actually, I, I don't really have a different take on it. I have discussed this some with Sean Camp, who's the Assistant Director of Elections for Plaski County. Um, and he has not had a city ordinance that was sent for election quite that far and prospectively in the future. Of course, you know, we're not there yet. We would have to have an ordinance drafted that would be a sending document to send it for the referendum. Um, but it was his, um, opinion that it would be permissible to, um, prepare that sending document, an ordinance setting a date certain for the election as far as May of next year, if the council chose to do that. Um, so what you would be voting on, on this motion is to, uh, basically start that process to, uh, have me draft an ordinance that would be a sending document, um, setting it for election and beginning, you know, the contact with the county clerk and the election commission for next May.
Thank you. I've got a motion on the table, do I hear a second?
Yes, mayor, I'll second it. And I'd like to say something.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, you know, I've been on this council longer than anybody sitting at this table today. And it's very rarely that I have not made the hard decisions. So, and I don't believe this argument that because we were elected to make decisions that nothing can be turned over to the people. That's almost convoluted logic. I think this is one of the very few times, if not the only time, that I really think this does need to go to the people because it's a public safety issue. I have heard so many people say that they don't want pit bulls or any kind of bully breed dogs moving in next door to them. And so when it, it comes to that point, I think this is an issue that needs to go to the people. So if it doesn't, I'll be voting no.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Uh, councilmember Tierney, you're, you had a light on, was that? Okay. Is there any discussion on a motion to take this ordinance to a referendum by the people in the primary election currently scheduled for May twenty-second? Request that the city attorney guide us through the process to accomplish that. Councilmember Mizony.
My concern on this is, we had this motion last time we voted on it. And this one is basically the same as before. I get it, I hear both sides going to a vote, going to a not. But this is putting us on a slippery slope here. If that, okay, it didn't work once, I'm going to do it again. Basically the same until some, something else different happens. If, is this going to be the new standard? If it looks like, hey, upper opinion might be one or another, are we going to throw everything to a vote? This, this is the problem, this is the potential, setting up a, a precedent. I know I voted last time, it's different. I don't know if anyone's going to change, but this is basically the same. Or, or is this going to be every, this motion, every meeting until we have?
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion?
Uh, I'd like to clarify just for a second for Mr. Mizony. Uh, this is a, a slightly different version of that motion. That motion before was to actually table the ordinance uh, and then proceed, uh, once we get closer to the election to go ahead and do this. This, this goes ahead and commits us to that referendum. There's, there's no, no uncertainty like there might be a tabling it till, uh, November, which I made last time. So this is, this is the proper motion to make to get it on the ballot. I've consulted with the municipal league and, and that's, that's the way it would go. So this is, this is a, an altered motion. But I, I do believe that this is the way to settle this issue once and for all. Uh, let's, let the people tell us, uh, if, if this motion, if this ordinance does go ahead and pass, as it is now, there's going to be people unhappy and the first, first chance they get, they'll try to put the ban back on at some point. Don't know if I'll be on the council or not, but when somebody gets bitten, but if you take a vote of the people, then it's, it's settled. You're, you're only doing the people's business at that time. If they vote to go ahead and lift the ban, then, then it's, it's settled. Uh, and, and the, and the people are to blame if somebody gets bit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this motion? Seeing none, we have a motion to take this ordinance to a referendum by the people in the primary election currently scheduled for May twenty-twenty-two and request that the city attorney guide us through the process to accomplish this. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes. Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
We have a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call vote, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yeah.
Councilmember Shin? Councilmember Mizony?
I'm voting yes this time because it's basically the same as last time I voted yes. I'm all waffle, but the, after, after this, if, if nothing substantially changes, it's just becoming a, I don't know what, so, um, because I voted yes last time, I'm voting yes this time.
Councilmember Gartner?
No.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Motion fails.
What was, what was Mr. Shin's vote, please?
No.
A no?
Yes, sir. There's another option. I've spoken with the city attorney to separate it into two ordinances. One that the council can vote on, we can refer a part of it to the people. It's going to have an summary report, there's six thousand words of voting, so.
All right, uh, councilmember Tierney?
Uh, yes, I was wondering if, uh, the supervisor of Animal Services, Chris Evans is present tonight?
Mr. Davis, come on down.
Hello, Mr. Davis, thank you for coming. Sorry about getting your name wrong again.
You're okay.
Um, I just got in my mind, you got a different last name. Um, but we talked last week and I was asking you about, you give me a breakdown about all the animal attacks we've had in the city. And obviously we've had, you know, bites by Great Danes, Black Labs. We've had Amazon Driver, you know, bitten. We've had a roofer bitten. Uh, we've had, you know, a number of different people, apparently a couple of German Shepherds that like to chase the trash truck, uh, things that right now you can't do anything to deal with. Uh, but you know, one of the things that the argument so far has been focused on is pit bulls, pit bulls, and then pit bulls. Because ordinance does so many more things, uh, than just dealing with the breeds. Uh, the whole point of this thing is to give you more of the tools that you need to do your job. Now, currently, uh, we have no tether laws in Mammell, do we?
No.
Uh, the new ordinance would change that, would it not?
Yes.
Uh, how often do you see things that would be considered offensive by the new ordinance occurring at, at the present time?
We see about, uh, at least two to three times weekly on somebody tying up a dog or something in their backyard.
Do you see two or three offenses a week? That would be something you would tell the owner, you cannot treat an animal that way?
Correct.
So it really, these are acts of animal cruelty to yourself.
Yes.
And see, that's one of the things I'd kind of like to point out that ordinance also addresses is something that we're not addressing at all in our community at this time and that's, uh, you know, animal rights. And, uh, you know, I mean, you know, yeah, everybody's concerned about a certain type of breed, but there's a lot more to this ordinance than that. Uh, do you have any perspective or feelings about, uh, that this ordinance can help you do your job much better?
I believe so, it will.
Thank you, I wanted to confirm it, Tricia.
No problem.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance ten-twenty-two? Councilmember Mizony?
Yeah, how much, um, background do you have working with around pit bulls? Um, because they're, they're out there. Note, um, one thing I've had is, I get a little grumpy, this is my wife will attest, I spent many sleepless nights doing this, working calls on this, looking, trying to research. I've called the supervisor of Animal Services for Denver, talked to him, West Little, or West Memphis, talked with her, Little Rock, talked to them. As well as a worker bee on each one. Um, except Denver, because that was, they're prepping for their snowstorm, but I did get their city council member who put theirs together. For them, as far as West Memphis, which I thought would have a large amount of pit bull attacks, they said it was pretty much proportional to shepherds. I also asked the, about the amount of damage compared to a pit bull versus, versus a shepherd. And she said they are, they are synonymous. One thing I got from the, um, director of Denver, who was there for seventeen years. He was there before ban, after ban, he's worked with both. One of the concerns he had was that animals, the pit bulls that are, that are in cities that aren't allowed are hidden. And so they don't get, um, socialized. And if they do get out, they are more apt to act of fear and aggression. Um, I don't know if that makes sense to you, that was kind of... I, I couldn't quite wrap my head around that, but, um, so what, what is your input take? How much hands-on have you had with pit bulls?
I've been doing this for ten years. I do have a pit bull. I live in Conway. Um, I am all over the state of Arkansas. I have dealt with the Cabot, with their BSL getting removed back in two, uh, two thousand eighteen. I am part of the Arkansas State Animal Control Association. I am a part of Code Three Animal Cruelty Investigation and the NACA Cruelty Investigation. I'm certified in the state of Arkansas. I'm certified in the state of Arkansas and in the United States to deal with cruelty investigations. Pit bulls, not here in Maumell, because we don't allow them, so there have not been very many attacks. So, we, we deal with German shepherds and labs. Correct.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Holt, was your, uh, comment related to Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay.
We've spoke several times, um, about dogs. And I have referred, as you are well aware, a number of calls that I've had from people with dog issues and referred them to the animal shelter. I've had many, many, um, emails from people who wanted to say that, uh, that this ordinance will make it much easier for you to do your job. Just gonna make it a whole lot easier, and it's just, uh, it's too hard to do it the way it is now. Can you give me an example or two of how much easier it's gonna be if we adopt this new ordinance as opposed to what you do now? Is your job more difficult now than it would be? It all seems to be reactive. There's nothing proactive in the whole thing, not one word. So, what is it that we're responding to that makes it better?
Okay. Uh, this is gonna be a sad story, what I'm gonna tell you. Over off, uh, Spring Cove, Spring Cove, there was a dog that-
Can you remove your, your mask?
There was a dog on Spring Cove that had a fenced in yard, but it was tethered on the porch. It jumped off the porch and strangled itself because it was tethered. We tried everything we can do because it did have a contained area. Our law doesn't say that it could be tethered or not, so we couldn't do anything. So on a Saturday morning, one of the officers went out there, dogs had jumped off the porch and strangled itself. So if the tethering part of this ordinance was taken care of, then we can go in there and take care of the situation where they cannot use that dog being tethered up. Now, will it make the job harder or easier? Does it matter if it makes it harder on, on us or not? We're animal control and that's our job.
Mr. Davis, if you could, uh, back up from the mic just a second.
So I'm not looking for an easy way or looking for a hard way on this ordinance. We're gonna go by what it wants, whatever y'all vote for or if the people vote for it.
As you well remember, I had a German shepherd named Jojo. And you and your crew were very, very, uh, helpful in helping me maintain my German shepherd because she jumped my six foot fence without any action effort whatsoever. Uh, I told the story the last time around when we went, went through this. Uh, he was a baby by nature, um, loved by everybody. But one night, I was sitting on, uh, my front porch with my neighbor and Jojo was laying there on the porch between the two of us. A crew of people, young people came down the street and they were laughing and talking and cutting up whatever. Jojo laying beside us growled. He had never growled at anybody in his life. I mean, he was a, he was just a loving dog. But because he growled at that moment, he became a potentially dangerous dog, a German shepherd. I don't think it was mixed breed or not. I don't, he didn't, he looked pretty German shepherd to me. Um, but again, I repeat myself and I apologize if you get tired of hearing the darn story. My son, who was a SWAT team policeman in Little Rock, one of the people called our policeman here at, at Maumell. That policeman happened to know my son. My son didn't really care if he was talking, talking dead or not. I got a thirty minute lecture about getting rid of a potentially dangerous dog. Because if he does bite somebody, I've had it. Insurance will not pay for it. So I had no choice, and you know, I wound up surrendering my dog to your, to your shelter. I never knew what happened. So it's just, you know, we live in a society of equal opportunity. And we talk about, well, this kind of dog bites and that kind of dog bites. Do we have to add another dog to give them an equal opportunity to bite also? I mean, it just seems like we're making a bad situation worse. So, if you haven't figured it out by now, I'm opposed to this, absolutely. Because it, I, as the people keep telling, it isn't the dog problem, it's the people problem. And we cannot regulate the people. What I'm gonna, we're not in a Gestapo nation yet. So, I don't believe in making it hard on people. Let us just live and relax and be happy. Uh, uh, so, that's the way I feel about it, and I'm not, didn't mean to put you on the spot. I consider you my friend.
Can I ask one question? No, sir. Unless he wants you to. But no, sir. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Uh, I welcome a question if you wish.
Sure.
You said, you stated your dog was on the front porch?
Yes, sir.
Without a leash?
It's white?
Was it with or without a leash?
You're gonna have to remove your mask, I can understand what you're saying.
The German shepherd Jojo on your front porch, with or without a leash?
He was without a leash, and, but we both-
That's considered an at-large dog.
Huh?
He was considered at-large. He was not in a contained area.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
So, if, if I was at, I was at fault, so that's why I had to get him up. And that, and under advice of my son, I took it without hesitation.
Thank you, sir. Any additional, uh, comments or discussion on ordinance ten twenty two?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, I'd like to ask Mr., uh, Councilmember Shen to elaborate on what his, uh, thoughts are, and it sounds like he'd like to take this to a referendum, but, uh, he's, uh, interested in, in dividing the ordinance up. Could you elaborate, please?
Well, I don't see why that has to be all or nothing. We're discussing, we're, we're basing the whole thing on five to ten percent of the whole ordinance. People are not gonna go to the voting station if they're unprepared and sit and read four thousand words. This way, the city elected officials can pass the bulk of it, going to give it to the animal control so they can do their jobs better. And then the people can decide the part that is so controversial.
Have, have you had conversations with the city attorney? Is it possible?
We have started, we have started conversations.
Okay. All right, so, so you're-
I can tell you at the moment, sir, because there's a lot to be done to make that happen.
All right, I think we've got one more meeting before the, uh, we vote on this. Uh, is that what you're planning to do? Is-
Be ready by then.
Okay, you're, you're looking to-
Will we be ready by then?
I, I was not sure that's where we were going, so I have not prepared any amendment. If you are moving, uh, I guess if you want me to divide this into two separate ordinances and to amend this to remove the breed ban from it, um, I can do that, and I can do it this week, but, um, I need, I need definite direction that, that's what you want me, that's what is the desire for me to do. Okay.
I guess, uh, excuse me. Did you have anything more, Mr. Shen?
No.
Okay, I guess my only concern would be as if, uh, as if we go ahead and pass the, uh, language, if it, if it changes the, uh, the ordinance we have in place now, the ordinance we have in place has held up under a Supreme Court ruling. I, I'm worried that maybe, uh, it might weaken it in that regard. But, uh, I would like the city attorney to maybe try to pay attention to that and see if she thinks that would be the case when, when you all are doing that.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance ten twenty two, Councilmember Gardner?
The Supreme Court ruling stated that cities have the right to ban specific breeds if they chose to do so. It did not state whether or not the Supreme Court thought that was the correct idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on ordinance ten twenty two?
Yes, Mayor. Um, I would just, thank you. Um, I really like the idea of dividing this into two. It almost seems like two separate issues. We want to give some authority and give, empower our animal control people. And I don't have a problem with that, and I think we should. But so far as making our community an animal sanctuary city for dangerous animals, I don't agree with that. So I, I kind of see it as two different issues. So I would like to see us divide this into two issues. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion on ordinance ten twenty two? All right, it'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. Next order of business is, uh, third reading of ordinance ten twenty three amending the Maumell Land Use Plan. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten twenty three, an ordinance amending the Maumell Land Use Plan and map for other purposes.
All right, we do have some public comment cards on this. Do we have any emails on this issue? All right, um, okay, um, first up, Gib Carpenter, come on down. You're the first contestant on ordinance ten twenty three. You have thirty minutes, sir. Uh, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Gib Carpenter, uh, two twenty two Mount Matarat Circle in Maumell. Um, I really did not plan to speak tonight. The, uh, representatives from the country club, uh, will be much better prepared with their marks than mine. But as I was printing out the city clerk's agenda for tonight's meeting, I came across Alderman Tierney's message through the mayor and, and the, uh, clerk to you for, for your information. Uh, and I want to address some items in there. Um, specifically, he references a valuation that came actually before the plant was, uh, demolished from, uh, from people in central Arkansas water. And, uh, that valuation, folks, is really, uh, irrelevant. It's a, it's an apples and oranges. Uh, the appraisal, and if you'll see on page, uh, six of twenty-six in, in that exhibit, um, three of the five, uh, comps are commercial. And the five point oh six acres, uh, at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be at a valuation of eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars an acre. Lord, I wish we could get that in Maumell. Uh, as y'all know, I'm, I'm a developer, uh, Alderman Mizony and Alderman, uh, Gardner will be familiar with the unimproved land we have at the end of Maumell Valley Drive that will soon connect to, uh, Manitou at the top of the hill. Uh, that's fifty-one acres, uh, fifty-one point six five. And every time we do one of these, we have to have an appraisal to be able to do our construction ones, and, and we're working on phase nineteen now. And, and that appraisal, and I'll be glad to share with you, unfortunately, shame on me, I didn't see Alderman Tierney's letter until right before the meeting, or I would have provided a higher appraisal. But that appraises at thirty-one thousand, three sixty-five. And that's a property that's already zoned R1. So, if you were to take the, uh, four acres in the water plant, that's roughly a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar valuation. Um, Alderman Tierney kind of made a connection to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the demolition of the plant, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the valuation of the property. He didn't, he didn't make a direct connection, but the demolition of the plant will only go into that fund part of the retirement of the bonds. That's why we pay a consolidation surcharge of twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents every month. And the difference in the offered purchase price and what it would appraise at is open space is a pebble in the ocean to the retirement of those bonds. With eight thousand plus, uh, subscribers to Maumell Water Management, uh, at, at twenty dollars a month, you can see, we're talking about a month's early retirement of those bonds, and there's millions and millions in those bonds. But then my question really comes down to, why is the city council involved in influencing the price of real estate? Uh-oh, thank you, sir.
Next up is, uh, uh, Mr. Greg Raymer. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Greg Raymer. Uh, I reside at one forty-seven Beere Creek Lane. Mayor, council members, um, my wife and I have been residents of Maumell for nineteen years, members of Maumell Country Club for eighteen of those. And tonight, I'd like to speak to you on behalf of our members who are parents, like my wife Kelly and me, uh, and have children who frequently use the golf and pool facilities at the club. But first, I want to make sure that it's abundantly clear that the vote before you tonight is not just a rezoning vote, but a vote to authorize the development of the land, land in question because it will some way, somehow happen if you vote to rezone this property. As a part of this development, we'll be required to have a city street going through the busiest section of our club. Those of you who have come by the property before know the area well firsthand. My son Miles is fourteen years old. He just turned fourteen last week. Passed his learner's permit test the day after. It's a pretty exciting time for him. I'd love for him to be here with me tonight, and believe it or not, he would have come. Uh, but he's home studying for a test that he's got tomorrow, and I thought it'd be, it'd be best if he did that. On any random day when the weather allows, Miles and other teens and pre-teens will be roaming between the driving range and the putting green, and then eventually, when the weather's warm in the summer, where all kids wind up the swimming pool. The path they take is right where a new street would have to be built. So what's now a relaxing, leisurely stroll would turn into a game of dodgeball, only instead of dodging balls, they'd be dodging cars. As leaders of Maumell, you have a very important responsibility to our city. Those responsibilities include decisions made about a wide range of topics. But I have to think that if we went around the room, that each of you would say the number one priority of this council is to ensure the safety of our citizens. If we can't do that, then we can't do anything else. So I ask you, how can we ensure the safety of our children if we have a city street handling traffic from this proposed neighborhood? The simple answer is we can't. I urge you to put this matter to bed and vote against rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is, uh, Mr. Brad Frederickson, Frederiksen. Did I say it right the first time?
Frederiksen.
There we go. Yeah, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, once again, my name is Brad Frederiksen. I live at thirty-one Fairway Woods, and I am the president of Maumell Country Club. You may call this my closing argument, since I understand you will be voting on this matter this evening. I would like to once again emphasize how important this issue is to the members of our club, and I believe how important Maumell Country Club is to the city. Yes, there was a water plant there a couple of years ago that made this sense, considering our drinking water was coming from wells just to the south. But now that's gone. The property is still zoned, open space, and it is completely surrounded by open space. It's almost certain that if Jess Odom had not needed to put the water plant there, it would not have been part of the golf course in the first place. So today, our city code calls for open space to be preserved and protected and indicates several recreational uses. Maumell Country Club would like that property to be available to us and expand our facilities. While we're not open to the public, we accept any citizen that wants to share the cost of our operations, and therefore, we are not tax subsidized by those who are not interested. In addition, the club attracts many new visitors to the city, provides tax revenue, sales tax revenue from both member charges and outside events that we host, and has been the reason for more than one family that has decided to move here. You've heard and know the safety issues of constructing a city street to that development and the impact it will have on our operation. So now the decision for you is which is more important? The addition of five houses to the city of Maumell? Or the impact and opportunity for, for the country club to continue to expand and flourish? Our members are your constituents, and I'm sure they will care how you vote on this matter. Our members are your constituents, and I'm sure they will care how you vote on this matter. I sincerely thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Ron Harris. Mr. Harris, if you could limit your comments to 1023 and 1024, and then we'll call you back up for 1025 and 1026.
Ron Harris.
There you go.
6309 South Wind Drive, North Little Rock, Arkansas. I reminded of that movie. What's that movie? Julie Roberts, I'm just a boy standing in front of, I'm just a girl standing in front of a boy. What's that movie? What is that? What is it? Anyway. I'm just a builder, standing in front of city council. Trying to be a builder, trying to work with my neighbors. I've been out there many times. What I'm trying to do is meet with them and desire a nice striped lane, street drive, private drive, whatever you want to call it. Fix their drainage issue. I'm building state lots. They have to be primo, and they have to look nice. Whether I put a gate there or not, I haven't decided. There's a gate already there. I could just put a motor on it. I hadn't, I hadn't decided that yet. It depends on the sales. I've been out there this weekend measuring that concrete building. I, I'm seriously thinking about, I don't know. Instead of tearing it down, I might make it a racquetball court. I mean, we might be able to add something to the club. I don't know, but I'm trying. So all I ask is, council is to go ahead and, and move us forward with this PRD, because we got to go back, back to the planning commission and, and get the approvals of the streets and everything else that we're going to be doing. You're still going to have control. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I also got a public card from, a comment card from Mark Bingman, who said that he's available if anyone has any questions. With that, we'll go ahead and open up ordinance 1023 for discussion.
I've got something, Mayor.
Councilmember Mosley.
Yes, could I, could I ask Mr. Carpenter to come back up? I wanted to ask him a question.
Yes, sir.
You had touched on the appraisal on this land. And I did notice in the packet that there is appraisal in there, and it's a, and from what I could tell, the, the properties all had various different zoning. It wasn't, wasn't, appraisal's based on open space. And I know when I have my house appraised, if I'm selling it or something, they, they only do an appraisal for, for residential, you know, what it's currently, currently zoned as. How, how unusual is it to present an appraisal for zoning categories other than what it's already zoned?
I, I can't answer that, because all of the appraisals we've had done have been done on raw land or the value with improvements so that we can get our construction financing. So I can't speak to the, the validity. I can just read that the first three are either PCD or C3, which is commercial. Then they do have a couple, it looks like maybe a Country Club of Arkansas PRD. But $350,000 that was cited, both by Alderman Tierney and, and he got it from the appraisal, is $86,251 an acre. And that's not the valuation of unimproved real estate in Mammell. Or at least that hadn't been our experience. And if, if I can get $80,000 an acre, I've got some land for sale. But in fact, the appraisals we get, we put the valuation of that property closer to 125,000. But again, my personal opinion as a developer, it's not the role of the city council to influence real estate prices. I don't want you influencing the, the prices of our real estate, and I don't believe that it's appropriate for you to be involved in the negotiations on this property.
Good. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I would, I would echo that. Based on, on the criteria that's in the city code for evaluating a rezoning, there's nothing in it about looking at value or appraised value or trying to get the highest price or anything like that. I, it would appear to me that it's none of the council's business, what the price is, what the value is. It would appear to me that we should just be going by what the ordinance talks about. It goes back to those four items, changes in the neighborhood. Did these results, did this, these changes result in enough to justify changing the zoning? In other words, you have to justify it. Other, other issues as far as things raised by residents, I'd, I'd say I got probably 25 emails in the last 48 hours, all asking for us to vote that down, and not a single one in favor. Am I correct on that, City Attorney? Should we, should we not be considering value? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is not one of the guidelines in our code on land use amendments. The, the guidelines that are stated under 54-79-7, I believe, is what you were just citing too. And those are basically what, what you just quoted.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd also like to mention again, I'm going to read something that we had a workshop on as far as spot zoning. Spot zoning is illegal. And if, if somebody votes to change the zoning and it appears to be spot zoning, a court can overturn that. And there was a, a case that we looked at there. So the case noted that the most important factor in determining whether a small parcel zoning amendment will be upheld against a spot zoning claim is whether the amendment provides a benefit to the public rather than primarily a benefit to a private owner. So we need to be looking at this too. Is this, would changing the zoning, would this be a public benefit to the public? Or is this primarily to benefit a private owner? And in my opinion, it looks more to be benefiting a private owner. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Councilmember Mizony.
Yeah, I have a few concerns on this. One is the overall PRD designation goes through this. Yes, it's only planned to be residential, five houses, but the United States is littered with projects that fail for any reason. So if this fails to go through any, any type of projects, if we rezone this PRD, future developments will be easier to put in apartment. Yes, we'll go back through, you know, the, the planning process. But if it's zoned to have multifamilies, it's going to be, that's going to be easier to go through. There's also the safety concerns we've heard about. I've got a lot of emails from constituents right there in the USAID about that, as well as impacts to the operation of the golf course. There's, I wanted to see it, it's like a 20-foot fence to try and keep golf balls, because it goes right off their driving range from going in there. There's no way that's not going to be an issue in some way, shape, or form if this passes and houses get put up. That will be an issue. But for me, my biggest concern on this is the overall health and welfare of Mammell as a city. One thing Mayor said, that our city sales, or city, sorry, salaries are too low. Also, we've only had two new commercial permits as well as 11 renovations. This year, the only significant capital expenses we could finance was a new fire truck that we had already saved for. We don't have that capability anymore. We, yes, our city sales factor are higher, but we can't do all that we need and flourish as a city. We need to increase our commercial base. One of the ways to do it is we need bragging. We need points of bragging. We're not going to have, we don't have the traffic count here that other cities have to draw. But what we do need and have is we're putting splash pad in. That's a bragging point to draw people here. We've got the Amazon. That's a driving point here. If we need a healthy recreational outdoor spot that's family oriented, so as that grows, because when I was there, they're talking about putting pickleball courts up, everything to help a community, that's going to be bragging point. That's, it's stuff like that that we need to flourish. And as Mr. Carpenter put out, all this money is going back to pay the bill, the bond debt for Call Water took out. Realize that that entire purchase, that Mammell Water that Call took is financed by every resident of Mammell. So that's another reason I think we need to look to the overall future of our city. We are, we need to change our ways. We need commercial development. And if, if we take away the drawings that we have or limit their future growth, we could be hurting ourselves. We're hurting ourselves in a few years. Thanks.
Is there any additional discussion on ordinance 1023, Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, since we were talking about, Mr. Carpenter asked about why would us to have that package put into the package. I thought I should probably explain that. I'm not suggesting that we look at the value. The reason I had asked, I had put it there is I had heard from every side of this issue except for the central Arkansas water. So I contacted them and asked them, you know, what your costs were to make, you know, repairs and restore the land and the situation it is, which was $353,000, which is something that all the residents of Mammell are paying. And so the sale of this land will go to recover those costs. Now, since Mr. Frederickson had talked about what the offer was, if the country club had wanted to make, and what the offer was that, you know, the current gentleman's making. And of course, we had another offer made last year, and I was asking had they had any appraisals done on their own. Now, I'm not suggesting that we take any kind of valuation into consideration. But the only reason I asked that, that put in there was just to show that this is a very valuable piece of property, that something's going to be done with it. And I mean, it, it's very attractive. I feel that, you know, that's, we just, the information we should all be aware.
Is there any additional discussion on ordinance 102?
Yes, that's true. And that will be a quick shock in the bond that we won't feel for years. But if by growing this or not impacting and shrinking their operations, we're able to increase our cash base, that's going to pay us dividends in the long run. And I think as a council, that's what we need to look for. For the next few years out, we need to look for what's ahead. We do not have that much available commercial land to develop. So in my opinion, that's what we need to look for. Thanks.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes, again to Madam City Attorney. When you gave your program on, on the TV, the internet the other day, you talked, it was about open space. So what is the, how does this fit into being able to change open space into something else? That's, isn't there a restriction unless it's something that's really needed for some reason to change it? It's, it's supposed to be pretty hard to change it in my own net.
We have Section 94-492, state public policy regarding open space. And it states, open space areas shall be maintained so that their use and enjoyment as open space are not diminished or destroyed. And then it sets out some mechanisms by which open space may be owned and, and preserved. And it requires that it either be owned by a public agency or a common ownership with a residence association with responsible for maintenance. Or if it is going to be through private ownership, that it be deed restricted to prevent development or subsequent subdivision of the open space land and provide maintenance. There are some statements of purpose in our code about the open space district having the purpose to protect public health, safety, and welfare by protecting set aside open space, whether for institutional reasons or aesthetic reasons, or for the protection of land area where natural geography creates practical difficulty for open development. So we do have a, a number of sections discussing, you know, the public policy behind maintaining open space, preserving open space, you know, as we've talked about before, once open space is gone, you, you can't get it back again. You know, you're never going to get that open space back as a designation once that's, that's gone. I, I will also say that just as a general matter, Section 94-8 regarding zoning amendments states, this chapter may be amended by changing the boundaries of the zoning districts or by changing any other provision of the chapter whenever the public necessity and general welfare require such amendment. I do think that should be your focus in making a determination. We've had a lot of discussion evaluations and fees. None of that is appropriate. And I think I said that in the prior section, session on that. Our concern is whether the public necessity and the general welfare require this amendment. And also, under the land use regulations, whether those specific guidelines there go along with that, go along with the, it being a matter of public necessity and the general welfare of the community.
Do we have a history of a prior open space already having been changed? Or is this the first one? Will this be setting a precedent if we do this?
That's probably a question for Scott Grummer. I don't, I do not know that off the top of my head.
Mr. Grummer?
I'm sorry, could you restate the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Have we had a, a previous occasion where we have changed an open space into the use of something else? I mean, will this be a first time of precedent if we were to do this?
I'm not aware of any, well, I'm sorry. We have had property that was designated for public utility usage as far as the transition from an open space. I haven't, I haven't done that research before I came in here, so I can't answer that so far.
It, it's my layman's understanding that the, the, the issue of a open space is, is in effect sort of sacred, and we don't, we try not to bother it if we can prevent it. If I'm, I don't know if that's right interpretation or not, but.
I mean, I think it's right, and I think the code states the wording that I just stated. But I mean, I, I don't disagree with your interpretation.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Tierney?
I have a question for Mr. Grummer before he gets away there. Actually, a couple of them. Can you just convert this to a fresh review of what the recommendation of the city staff and the planning commission was on this, on the issue?
So the city staff and planning commission recommendation was a due pass recommendation for this. When we looked at the land use and the zoning in coordination with the surrounding uses in the area, the, the land use fit the surrounding uses. So for this particular application that came forward, it, it was a reasonable request.
Great. One of the things that I found interesting, and another reason why I wanted to share that, a place I got from CAW, was talking about the existing road that everybody's concerned about, having like a 50-foot right away. How different would that be from the plan of the road that's being proposed? Does that, does this fit the same 50 feet? Would this be literally no change, or would it be a change?
So again, this is a rezoning and land use request. We haven't gotten into the evaluation from a development plan standpoint, because that was not run in unison with this request. But from previous conversations, the engineer for the, for the applicant has stated that they feel they can accommodate the road within the existing easement.
Right. And I'm pretty big, you had mentioned about how the traffic with this new chain. Now, this would be a cold section. This would not be like a through road. So you know, that, this would just go in there and just come out. There's no through traffic. Now, did you say that before that you felt that the traffic would be less with this development than what it was before when central Arkansas water was operating there?
Well, again, what we're going off of is information that was provided to the planning commission as well as in our analysis. When we're looking at the existing area, there was a, a traffic study that was provided after the first planning commission. When we're looking at the existing area, there was a, a traffic study that was provided after the first planning commission on this last year. And that was based upon the number, I believe, twenty-four units of residential. And so being five residential units and looking at the surrounding multifamily units that are basically enclaves scattered around the country club, five residential units does not, it does not have very much traffic. It's a very low traffic impact. So certainly a much less than the last request that came through last year with the higher density.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion on ordinance ten twenty-three? Thank you, Mr. Grummer.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick point. I know these traffic studies are based on when it was a water plant, but it's not a water plant anymore. Right now, there is no traffic going through there. So we'd be going from zero to having some traffic. Another thing I wanted to mention is I always feel like on anything we do that impacts residents and things, we need to always be looking to preserve the quality of life for our current residents. And we've got, I think that should be our top priority as council. And I think this, this would, this would affect about a thousand residents if this zoning is changed. There's about, I think they, with, with family members and everything, it's about a thousand people that would be affecting over there at the country club if this zoning is changed. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance, on ordinance ten twenty-three? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance ten twenty-three. So moved. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt ordinance ten twenty-three? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Councilmember Holt?
No.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Shin? Councilmember Mazoni?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
By a vote of five to three, ordinance ten twenty-three is adopted. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read ordinance ten twenty-four. By title only.
I was recording the vote. Sorry, sir. Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten twenty-four, an ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
All right, this is on third reading. Is there any discussion on ordinance ten twenty-four? If, if, sorry, I'm on a roll call, so if you've hit your button, please let me know. If not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance ten twenty-four. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk Treasurer, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shin? Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Mazoni? Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
By a count of six to two, ordinance ten twenty-four is adopted. We will move on to new business. The first item of new business is resolution twenty twenty-one dash seven approving a conditional use permit. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seven, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to conduct church-related activities in a C two village center commercial zoning district.
All right, I think the title sums it up. Is there a representative of the applicant here? I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Would you, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. Thank you also for your patience. You, you got on the long council meeting. With that, is there any discussion? Councilmember Gardner?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash seven.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you for coming out and for your patience, sir. Next order, I'm getting lost here. The next order of business is the first reading of ordinance ten twenty-five amending the Mammell land use plan. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten twenty-five, an ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map and for other purposes.
All right. This is a proposed, we've got a public comment card with just a brief introduction. This is a proposed land use amendment for the area that is depicted in the exhibits. It's the area between the, what is it, U Store, the old Kroger building and Commerce Drive there. With that, I do have a public comment card from Mr. Ron Harris, who is the applicant. Mr. Harris, if you could please come to the podium, state your name, name, address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Ron Harris, sixty-three oh nine South Wind Drive, North of Rock, Arkansas. Again, Mr. Mazoni, you talked about markets and, and, and commercial space. And, and this owner of this commercial space has had it for, gosh, I don't know how long. And we, we have come up with a design working with your planning commission and your commissioner to, to market for senior housing. So when you talk about markets, we definitely are on track for a need for senior housing. And this particular project is going to have a property owners association. And the property owner association is going to have an identified home healthcare provider that when your mom and dad, they move in there, you move in there later on in life, and you need X level of care, day or two, or a week, or if you bust your hip and need a month, then that level of care is already negotiated by that home healthcare provider. And the current P O A in there has leverage over that healthcare provider. So it's, it's going to be a unique senior living place. There's going to be a small amount of multifamily on the side too, to accommodate some planning commission desires for density. And it also might help out too as far as seniors that may want to rent or purchase. So that's still all on the table. But again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion on ordinance ten twenty-five?
I've got, I've got something.
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask a question to Mr. Grummer.
Come on, come on down, sir. Go over your question, Mr. Mosley.
Yes, Mr. Grummer. What was your staff recommendation on, on the, on this one?
Staff recommendation on this one was a do not pass recommendation to City Council.
Could you, could you elaborate? And does it have anything to do with maybe trying to retain commercial areas here in Mammell?
So part of the recommendation came from retainage of commercial areas. But one of the challenges that we have with this area is the fact that it has set zone for commercial for over twenty-plus years and has not built out or developed out other than what was already there. So the moving of Kroger to the town center area and away from this pulled away some commercial marketability for the area and the, and the landowners. So staff does, did acknowledge the fact that the revisit to the land use and the zoning in the area is worthy. And it's one of the things that we've, so the do not pass was mainly because the P R D being mostly residential does not conform with the existing land use and the zoning for the area. Surrounding this property is C three and C three does not allow any residential. In addition, the, even though this is a zoning and land use request change, the proposed development showed mostly single-family residential. So that next to C three and the industrial use was not a compatible use, which is the majority of the reason for our do not pass recommendation. I will say though, that the, the property owner has met with staff since that decision and has, has shown that he's been willing to work with the city and trying to accommodate any additional changes that may be needed in the area to accommodate this. So as that, he allowed city staff to place on the agenda for planning commission in the month of March, a zoning change of the C three property surrounding this to a C two, which is more of a town center zoning, which we have allowed residential uses. So.
Okay, okay. Would it be possible, I don't know if you already have a map or could you prepare a map? And it doesn't have to be anything complicated or anything. But I would be interested in a map that would show the remaining undeveloped commercial real estate here in Mammell, just to give us an idea of how much is remaining and that sort of thing. Because I think we all are very interested in trying to expand our sales tax base through, through commercial areas. And I would certainly hate to give up some areas that might eventually develop into commercial if that's all we've got left. I think there's probably some more left, but I'm mainly interested in what is currently zoned, commercial, and has, has yet to be developed.
I'll be more than happy to prepare that for you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Could I ask, did you all consider traffic in this situation? Is this going to create any traffic problem up there? I know, I think the current way to get out on the Boulevard is, is just some lane cuts, I think, in the median.
So this area was originally zoned and planned as C three commercial park. So it was planned for traffic volumes being close to the Boulevard. Whether if that's commercial or residential, you're going to have increased traffic. So we did take that into consideration. But because of its proximity, that's, the, the property is located best for increased traffic because it has easier access to the Boulevard.
Okay. So in other words, in other words, the increased traffic by residential doesn't look to be significantly more than the commercial?
Well, we haven't done any specific studies comparing the two.
Okay, okay. What does, could I ask the mayor what he thinks about this? Would he care to weigh in?
This is a bit of a tricky situation. First of all, I'm always in, yes, you may, and I will answer. I'm always a huge proponent of private property rights. And when that clashes with what I would personally prefer to see on property, my tendency is, is to go with private property rights over mine druthers. One of the issues that we have in this area is that the area that was commercial that used to have a lot of traffic, primarily where the old supermarket used to be, is now a, a storage facility. The bank next door to it is now an insurance agency. I believe the stuff that is across the street that used to house one of those places where you would rent, what are they called? Those rectangular V H S things? Yeah. That used to be there and drive a more retail environment. That is now a physical therapist. And so the nature of that has changed. Looking at the commercial area just north of the proposed land use, not, so it's a proposed land use in commercial, then across the street is the area that's C three, that they're looking to now downgrade to C two. And then north of that is commercial, but we have the Highland Point apartments that are there. One of the bigger concerns that, that I would have with rezoning this without the condition coming next to, to the planning commission now is, is basically putting in a residential subdivision that would be almost immediately across the street from C three, which if memory serves, and correct me where I'm wrong, either Madam City Attorney or Scott, would allow things like warehousing, et cetera. We met with Mr. Pfeiffer about this, and he was amenable to downgrading that area from a C three to a C two to better transition between the industrial park and this proposed property. So in short, in druthers, I'd love it if, if retail popped up right there. However, what we're looking at in that area tends to be the shifting of that sort of commercial property away from that area of town to somewhere else. And that leaves the property owner in the awkward position of having land zoned for a use that was anticipated when maybe the surrounding area and the market conditions are shifting away from them. So I don't know that I've given my specific opinion other than the, some of the concerns. Madam City Attorney?
Did you want me to, did you want me to list the uses that are in C three or were you just?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So in C three, you can have all retail sales and service uses permitted in C one. And then the following additional commercial uses, animal boarding place or veterinarian clinic, automotive uses such as auto, truck, and trailer rental lot, car washes, new and used sales and service, parking and storage garages and lots, parts and supply stores, repair garages, and body shops, building supply, contractors' office and equipment yard, farm implement sales and service, funeral parlor, undertaking, hardware store, horticultural nursery products, household equipment and machine repair and servicing, laundry and dry cleaning plant, marine supply and equipment, printing and publishing, upholstering shop, vocational and trade schools, warehouse, general warehouse, mini and storage, wholesale sales and storage. There are also conditional uses such as adult daycare centers, cemeteries, churches, daycare centers, educational facilities, health facilities, and office buildings.
So thank you, Madam City Attorney. So my concern was with having that area C three immediately across the street from an area that we were looking at residential and perhaps, you know, single-family residential. That said, the applicant is okay with shifting that C three down to C two, which makes it a better transition between P R D, commercial, and then ultimately industrial. Also, I think within a preliminary development plan, there would be some ability to shape what that looks like inside that development to sort of further put buffers perhaps between, say, single-family homes at a higher type use in that area. So with, with the applicant agreeing to rezone from C three to C two, the neighboring area, with that, I don't know that I'd have an objection to the rezoning. Is that way too many words? Stand to your question, Mr. Mosley?
No, that's fine. You did quite well from probably not being prepared to discuss that. Thank you very much. All very relevant.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I wanted to ask a question, Mr. Grummer, just to confirm what the recommendation was of the planning commission.
So the planning commission recommendation was a do pass recommendation for this land use change and zoning change.
Councilmember Gardner?
Director Grummer, I'm sorry, you're on the hot seat.
Might as well stay standing, sir.
I just want to, this is kind of being clarified, but I just want to make sure I understand it. So with the proposal that's on the table, I'm not speaking about the specific rezoning request that we have, but the one that you see coming this month to downgrade from C three to C two. but the one that you see coming this month to downgrade from C-three to C-two. Would that satisfy staff's comments? I understand that the planning commission's already given this a do pass, but does that satisfy staff's concerns about the zonings being next to each other?
It does somewhat. So the PRD still allows for flexibility within the development type that happens in that PRD. There are still some concerns as to how that would be designed and built out. But it does offer up a better opportunity for creating that separation from the industrial to the residential use. And I will remind the City Council or share that past, in, in past experiences that have been mentioned by our Director of Community and Economic Development, is that we have another industrial use that was fairly close to a residential neighborhood and where residents did speak out about nightly noise coming from those uses. So again, another reason for looking at the actual transect of these zones are important. If this is going, going to be allowed, giving greater flexibility for creating buffer zones and, and use types that can help buffer them.
What other thing I noticed, I drove out there this past weekend just to look at the site. Not unfamiliar with the area, but it seems like as you're traveling on Commercial Park Drive, as you just turn past the insurance agency and you've not made the bend yet, it appears that there's a natural ridge or incline that goes up. And so I'm not, again, I'm not speaking about this property that's we're talking about today, but the C-three to C-two. If that were developed, that would seem to be a natural buffer as well because of the way the property elevates. So is that, does that alleviate some of those concerns?
Well, it, it could, if the future potential development were built up on the hill. There's no guarantee that hill will stay with future development. It could be excavated down to be at level. We looked at that from an elevation standpoint, and there is the possibility of that. So then that means that other buffers will be needed. There is a use behind this hill that hasn't been filled, it's been excavated out, and it's undetermined what that future industrial use would be. So again, you just can't hold to the geography until after, until the development plan comes in.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mazoni?
Yes, one of the concerns was the price for the increased need for first responders. Have we looked at what the actual numbers will be? Can we support that? Will we need more? Will we need more MEMS? Because that, that price has increased the past few years. So that's something else, another impact you would have to an already stringed budget.
Is that a question, Councilmember? So we've, we've had these conversations with our first responders. Again, we, we don't have a study to back this up. This is more concerning than the overall response from them and ambulatory services to, to seniors within the community. That would be an impact where you would have increase in our emergency response requirements, which is a cost to the city, as well as the location of that type of development to Mammell Boulevard. But, but yeah, that's, that could be a potential cost. And yes, we, we did look at that.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance ten twenty-five? If not, it'll be on second reading at the next City Council. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read ordinance ten twenty-six, amending the Mammell zoning map by title only, please.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten twenty-six, and ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Is there any discussion on ordinance ten twenty-six? Seeing none, this will be on third, second, second, this will be on the second reading at the next City Council meeting? I'm afraid we'll end up at the next City Council meeting. The next order of business is the first reading ordinance ten twenty-seven, enacting supplemental provisions of the city code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten twenty-seven, and ordinance adopting and enacting supplemental provisions of the city code for the City of Mammell, Arkansas, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become.
All right, this is the fairly standard ordinance that we passed once municode has adopted or codified the ordinances up to this point. Councilmember Gardner?
I want to take a shot in the dark here, since this is a purely administrative ordinance, and I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and have all three readings tonight. I do understand it takes two-thirds majority. So it's purely administrative, so I was going to see if we could deal with it tonight.
I have a motion to waive the second and third, or to have both the second and third readings tonight. And I have a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of having the second and third readings tonight, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
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 Motion. Thank you. Motion passes. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only twice. Pardon, can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Councilmember Saunders?
No.
Councilmember? Mazoni? Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Tierney? Councilmember Shin? Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Well, I, I believe we need six, yeah, six. Motion doesn't pass.
Thank you all.
Thank you for that catch. All right, is there any discussion on ordinance ten twenty-seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It seemed like we did a very similar ordinance here, just like in the last two or three months. Was that to codify, what was, what, what was that? Do you remember?
I believe what happened, and I believe what happened is we ran the ordinance before we received the actual codification from municode. And so we ran it, I believe, on first reading and then polled it. Does that sound familiar, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, it was about six, four months ago.
Okay, so we didn't go ahead and pass that one, then?
We did not, because they hadn't been received.
Okay, but this basically codifies everything that we've done in the past year and, and its effect on our ordinance is correct?
Yes, correct.
Well, it is up through the stated ordinance there. It should have, pardon me, through December.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Was there any additional discussion on ordinance ten twenty-seven? If not, it'll be on second reading at the next City Council meeting. With that, I just wanted to briefly mention the email I have received from Ms. Anderson, who is one of the folks that has been, I included this email in the council packet. She's one of the folks who have been working really hard to write grants and try and get money for the splash pen. There's an issue where we received a grant from the Ottenheimer Brothers Foundation, and then allegedly someone from the City Council, I don't know whom, nor can I verify this, nor is that my intent tonight, apparently reached out to someone they knew that sat on the board there and made some comments that made the, that individual apprehensive about even getting involved in these sort of grains for other cities. And it's my understanding that now they are no longer supporting playgrounds for any cities because of what they, what was said or what they felt they believe. So I just want to encourage everyone to be very conscious of, of sort of the ramifications and some conversations. The splash pad is and has been approved by the City Council. There was a resolution supporting it, and that speaks for the will of the council in the city. Not an individual council member nor myself can sort of say that that is not accurate. So just with that, I sent them a letter thanking them for their donation to the splash pen. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor, for sending that letter and reaching out. I probably would not be a better.
If you could speak into the microphone.
Thank you for doing that. And it would probably be not a bad idea if other council members did the same. Just, just to show some appreciation, a thank you note for fifty thousand dollars, which we probably should have already done. But, and I've been remitting that, too, but.
Thank you. Maybe we can get together a, just a letter to pass out to other folks. It's a good idea, Councilmember.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Tierney?
I'll just say that.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Councilmember comments. Seeing none, we're, we're, City Attorney comments?
No comments.
Madam City Clerk?
No comment.
Please take notice in the FYI, the North Plaski East-West Connector, notice of virtual public meeting. You get a lot of these notices. Please, please, please take a look at this. This is a, a, the, the, our daughter's looking at a plan to connect East Plaski County to West. We're in West Plaski County. This has the potential to affect Mammell. One of the proposals being discussed comes down and connects to White Oak Crossing on the other side of the forty. Please, please, please take a look at this, get involved. They've interacted with the city a whole lot. Please do your homework on that. And yeah, with that, I would begrudgingly entertain a motion to adjourn. I've got a motion second to adjourn. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for your patience this evening and for polite and tactful.